Good evening. Better late than never, the March 11th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Hacariz.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Kelly.
Sorry, sorry here, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns. He's, he will be back. Councilmember Safford.
Here.
Councilmember Revell.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Thank you. And Mayor Biss.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my announcements and proclamations, of which I have just one, which is that today marks the beginning of Ramadan, so Ramadan Mubarak for all those who are involved in celebrating. And I just want to give all community members who may not be Muslim a reminder that for the course of the next month, if you're planning events or other public functions, to be conscious of the fact that our Muslim neighbors are fasting and to make appropriate accommodations. With that, the next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, no announcements tonight.
The next item on the agenda is the communications from the city clerk.
I just wanted to acknowledge we received an email from Steve Hart with a petition for, from 603 people that signed against the leaf blower moratorium and Amy Parker as well in favor of not going forward with a moratorium and Phyllis Nickel asking the city council to expand housing and Mark Schroeder, a letter from Endeavor Health for the minimum wage ordinance and Susan Floor. There's other public comments that we received quite late, but those are in your inboxes as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This brings us now to public comment. Just want to again remind the community of the city council guidelines relative to public comment, which is intended to foster dialogue in a respectful and civil manner. And any person who makes such remarks or who utters loud, threatening, personal or abusive language or engages in any other disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a meeting shall, at the discretion of the mayor or presiding officer, be barred from further participation during that meeting. Public comments are requested to be made with these guidelines in mind. This evening, we've got a large number of people, just in excess of 30, so everyone will be given a minute and a half for public comment. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, starting with Tanya Padilla, followed by Clark Elliott, and then Adriana Gomez.
Hi, I'm Tanya Padilla. I'm here to speak for the landscaping community. And before I begin, I just want to make sure that we're understanding that our points are, we're not wanting to go green, that's not what we were saying. We were saying, we want to go green, we're just not there yet with the landscaping. We want to make sure that you're aware of that, that we, we're not saying no to green, we're just not there yet. So I just ask that when I put my bulletin points together, that you use your ears to listen and your heart for some compassion. So I work for a multimillionaire company and I create standard work and policies and procedures. That's my passion and that's what I love to do. So I understand when changes need to occur. I just wanted to talk about the homeowner harassment. Who is owning and informing the homeowners that they can no longer police the landscaping community? Who is owning the follow-up so that we can ensure that this is happening? The rep for the public health department even stated in their own PowerPoint last month that the homeowners have a lack of awareness and understanding these rules. The public health department stated that homeowners need to provide pictures and videos. Well, I'm here to say that pictures shouldn't be allowed. We should allow videos as pictures can be deceiving. Bigger companies are sending their workers and their friends to find the smaller companies and take photos and videos of them to take them down by hurting their pockets. I ask you, who is looking into this as in a type of harassment and who is watching the trends? I am worried now that when I say goodbye to my dad in the mornings, I might not see him again because of how this world can be and how you can upset somebody. Who is going to stop them from ending my father's life? All over a strict leaf ordinance, let me say that again, so you can really truly hear the heart. Who's going to tell me that my father will come home?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I just want, we're having a little technical issue up here with the timer. All right, so we'll continue with public comment and try to resolve it because of the, because something isn't functioning properly, I'll give a 15-second warning in the, in the future, at least until this is resolved. Moving ahead with Clark Elliott, who will be followed by Adriana Gomez, and then Hector Hernandez.
Councilmembers, thank you. I am Professor Clark Elliott. Bringing back leaf blowers has victims. I speak for 75,000 Evanston residents, including 14,000 children, 7,000 people with asthma. In only a week, over 600 residents have signed a petition passionately asking you to keep the leaf blower ban in place. These are your constituents and voters. Please don't vote anti-environment and anti-health. Every scientific organization that's ever studied these gas leaf blowers has found them to be horrific for public health. The CDC, EPA, Cedar Sinai, Yale Medical School, all tell us that they produce toxin and carcinogens such as benzene, butadiene, formaldehyde, carbon monoxide, VOCs, nitrous oxides, and many others. These dirty devices produce the equivalent of 105,000 cars driving around Evanston every day. Gases and noise like from these blowers are linked to in children, schoolchildren, lower reading scores, lower math scores, task completion problems, and so on, and for everyone, cognitive impairment, lung disease, stroke, hearing loss, and I could go on. Inexpensive viable options exist, and I gave you documentation on this, a commercial power 730 cubic foot per minute Ryobi blower with 18 batteries to last all day long is under $1,000.
15 seconds.
And it's 28% more powerful than the most popular still device. Landscapers could go to Home Depot tonight and eBay tonight and by Thursday be fully compliant for the next several years. Thank you. The partial plan has been in place for decades.
Thank you very much.
This was voted on two years ago. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Adriana Gomez, who will be followed by Hector Hernandez, and then Alvaro Gomez.
Penalizing these landscapers for using gas leaf blowers is discrimination based on economic status. Going green is a privilege. You are pushing my community out of Evanston. You giving grants isn't enough to make the full transition, that's a Band-Aid solution. I'm concerned about the proper disposal of the batteries, charging stations, and battery My cousin is now teetering between investing in the change or getting his oldest daughter into college. Please protect small landscaping companies. We need more time, more resources to transition in a realistic timeframe, not just more money. Exemptions should be removed. This city should set an example and be the first to do a full transition. But the three weeks you are offering is peak rain season. I am asking you to consider allowing them to use the equipment they can afford without being penalized for the full month of April in the spring and the full month of November in the fall. I believe that is a reasonable and realistic ask. My father paid his tickets for violating the ordinance, he pays taxes. A realistic timeframe to transition from gas to electric isn't just weeks or months. I propose the city of Evanston transitioned from the use of gas-powered leaf blowers to the use of electric leaf blowers by April 2027.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Hector Hernandez, who will be followed by Alvaro Gomez, and then Clifford Capone.
Ready? Okay. Who is enforcing the ordinance? City residents should not be the enforcers, they should not be harassing, following, or intimidating companies and their employees. And not to mention, the majority of landscape companies located in Evanston are of Hispanic and Latino orientation, and Evanston failed to relay the leaf blower ban law in Spanish. With this new law, the portal to apply for compensation for such a quick and drastic change in the city did not leave much opening for businesses to sign up for the funding provided by Evanston. Now they came up with the grant, which we applaud, yet it was never about the money. What we are clearly, or what we have clearly seen is behind this new reform, a lot of citizens from Evanston have acted in such forms of harassment. My company, like many others, have fallen victim to Caucasian citizens not only yelling, smiling, but also driving while recording several times to get the right shot. Lithium batteries in Illinois, well, they, they don't even know how to dispose of them properly in Illinois. We have to ship them out to Arizona, and that comes with the price as well. So again, one thing about these lithium batteries is they just, they're not sufficient to get the job done, and what you guys are asking for is a $60,000 investment, 25 grand just isn't enough. And again, we need to probably rethink what's going on with this idea before just voting and not allowing the rest of us to vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alvaro Gomez, who will be followed by Clifford Capone, and then Joseph St. Clair.
Mi nombre es Alvaro Gomez, este solicitó que me interprete aquí esta persona. Desde un principio que empezó todo esto, a mí me agarró desaprevenido totalmente y para acabarla me dieron tickets pagando yo todo lo que la, este, el permiso. Aún así me dieron tickets y este, y no nomás a mí pues aquí hay como unos, no también tú, pero yo pienso que como unos 60 personas que les dieron tickets y a todas fueron de muchos, no nomás uno. La otra vez estaba hablando ahí la, I think that's ella, la que estuvo preguntando de los tickets y dijo que los tickets solamente se daban en las, en donde está prohibido estacionarse. Hay partes que los lunes, los martes en, o sea diferente área, este, ponían tickets a los que no quitaban el carro. Eso no es lo que nosotros estábamos diciendo. A nosotros nos sacaron, nos pusieron los tickets con fotos, con videos.
15 seconds, 15 seconds.
No sabemos ni quién fue, entonces yo, lo que quiero es que me den el permiso que yo solicité desde un principio, seis semanas en, al empezar y seis semanas al, en el fall. De lo de en medio nosotros sabemos cómo hacerlo, pero no vamos a aceptar sus préstamos que están haciendo.
My name is Alvaro Gomez. For the first time, when everything started about this leaf blower problems, I was very surprised. Then I got many tickets and I was not the only one. There were like 60 people getting those tickets. I think Councilmember Harris was talking about in the last meeting about people getting tickets, about the cards. We are not talking about that. We are talking about the people are giving us tickets and they are very, random people that we don't know. They just take pictures and videos, we don't know what they are doing behind us. So I only ask you to provide six weeks for us to work, especially in the spring and the fall. That's it.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Clifford Capone, who will be followed by Joseph St. Clair, and then Pam Rosenbusch.
Hi, thank you, Clifford Capone, 7th Ward. Well, one, one thing we can all agree on is that the planet's burning, and we know that these gas-powered leaf blowers are one of the major culprits, primary culprits. Now, since the ban of gas-powered leaf blowers was put in effect decades ago, virtually every landscape contractor ignored it, and up until the full ban took effect, they've literally had decades to move on electric for use in the summer months, summer months, yet they haven't. They all could have been compliant by now in some form or fashion, but they've willfully deliberately chose not to. And it's not because they're not aware of the ban, because they are. We know this because many of the landscape contractors sitting in this room have either been informed by a citizen, issued a warning, or summoned by the Evanston Police Department in the past. Or they know a fellow contractor that has, yes, they do talk to one another. So to suggest that, suggest that they haven't been aware of the ban, it just doesn't hold water. It's not fair to say that. One thing's for certain, they all know and they'll continue to violate the ordinance until you've put enforcement in place that actually has some teeth. Landscape contractors know that being ticketed is slim to none. So that's why we continue to see them use them in the summer months with impunity. And, and until we put a full ban in place, that's going to happen, and keep the ban in place. What message, by the way, does it, does it send backing off gas now?
15 seconds.
To all the landscape contractors doing business at Evanston who have been complying with the ban, they've done, they're, they're paying attention to the law. That's the wrong message to send, guys. You made the law, stick to it. Now come on, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Joseph St. Clair, who will be followed by Pam Rosenbusch, and then Cynthia Beebe.
We're, there's a lot of guys sitting back here that hard-working group. Electric leaf blowers are very extremely tough. If you get one house that gets inundated with leaves and trying to get an employee to rake all that stuff out by hand and get all that stuff out, electric blower, electric blower, even an extra employee is not going to do it. The weight is heavy. Well, if we can corral stuff into one big pile and then get it into a truck quicker with a gas-powered blower, it's more efficient, it's quicker, and it's less taxing on the pocketbook for Evanston residents. All we're asking for is, before I believe we had six weeks, we would like four weeks in the spring and four weeks in the, in the fall. I believe that is a true good compromise, not only for the contractor, but for the homeowner as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Pam Rosenbusch, who will be followed by Cynthia Beebe, and then Juan Rodríguez.
Hello, I'm Pam Powell Rosenbusch. I live at 1914 Grant Street, opposite the 1915, 1970, 17 Grant Street project. Our preference is that the development go through the Planning and Development Committee instead of a special use with zoning relief. Because, one, this is the first pocket neighborhood for Evanston in the Evanston City Council, and all of us want the initial project to be an example for future projects and be a success. We need to, two, we need to see the actual blueprints for this Grant Street project, not the pictures from the development that we think might be from the Elizabeth Singleton that was built, or was to be built out in Avondale, a Phoenix suburb in Arizona, that was to be bridge housing of only 90 to 180 days for the homeless, disabled, mentally ill, and abused women and their children. But this design was not used in the end at Build U.S. Hope in Avondale, Arizona. Three, due to the multiple bankruptcies of Mr. Wallach's companies, including Wally Walls in Kenosha, he does not have a supplier lined up for walls, as Wally Walls is not currently manufacturing walls. It only has one employee, and he could be evicted at any time as the property is currently for sale by the bank. And four, Mr. Wallach hasn't mentioned any backup management if he's not available, and I worry about his financial management. I would like to see, and I think our neighborhood would like to see this going back to the Development and Planning Committee so that we dot our i's, cross our t's, and do the necessary things to have a good project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Cynthia Beebe, who will be followed by Juan Rodríguez, and then John Brazil.
Hi, I know it's been a long time and I've missed you all very much. I just want to reiterate that a friend of mine is a zoning attorney who told me months and months ago, hey, look, one of the first rules of zoning law is a law of unintended consequences. I am concerned, we are all concerned, again, about the lack of care that has been given to this proposal, lack of attention and due diligence. I don't think it's asking too much for, to follow what the Land Use Commission recommended, what we unanimously petitioned for, 140 of us. But having said that, we, again, we would like to see the, you vote the Grant Street proposal back to go through plan development and do your due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Juan Rodríguez, who will be followed by John Brazil, and then, sorry, Tom Mulcrone.
Hello, my name is Juan Rodríguez, a resident of the 5th Ward here in Evanston. I am born and raised here in Evanston, and I now work at my father's landscaping business, which has been family-owned since 2001. I'm here to speak on behalf of my landscaping colleagues and myself. The Evanston I've come to know growing up here has always been an Evanston full of inclusivity, equality, equity, and opportunities. I'm here to ask the city to temporarily stop the leaf blower ban to let our landscaping community continue to work. We agree and understand that pollution and the environment are a priority for the city, and we understand that there are dangers to using gas and propane energy. We understand that the city wants to be a leader in environmental issues, but at what cost will the city continue to do this? At the cost of all these family-owned businesses who are just trying to make a living, who work 10 hours a day, five to six days a week, working hard labor, Evanston needs to do better and stop using our landscaping community as an example. It's no wonder that the golf courses and the city public works are still allowed to use gas-powered leaf blowers because the technology is just not there. The electric leaf blowers that are available right now cannot handle commercial work that we do. Yes, there are grants to buy more expensive electric leaf blowers. Yes, there are a few quote-unquote "commercial" electric leaf blowers, but the technology is just not there.
15 seconds.
There are 52 weeks in a year where we are asking for you is to allow us to use gas blowers, only eight out of those 52 weeks, to let us, to let us work and let the Evanston community flourish. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Brazil, who will be followed by Tom Mulcrone, and then Peter Harats, I believe. Is John Brazil here? Seeing not, we'll move ahead with Tom Mulcrone, who will be followed by, again, I'm trying to read this properly, Peter Harats or Harats, and then Jill Zorden. These individuals may have gone home after P and D. Again, Tom Mulcrone, followed by Peter Harats, and then Jill Zorden. If none of these individuals, yeah, okay. So we'll move ahead, and there may be a few of these here, which in case you're keeping score, I was betting on when I gave you the minute and a half, so I think we'll still be at 45 minutes. The next speaker then is Morgan Kelly, who will, who will be followed by Wes Khan, and then Amy Parker.
So I spoke at the last meeting. I just want to.
And sorry, can you identify yourself?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Morgan Kelly.
Thanks.
I'm in the 7th Ward, live on Neustreet, just a block or two down from the Pocket Community, and I just have to reiterate that this is the first time that we're doing this. I don't understand why we're not listening to our experts who have unanimously recommended that this go into plan development, if it only takes a couple months to get this right so that we have a model community that we can be proud of, we can do the due diligence. I think that's, that's all that we're asking for. I don't think anyone in my neighborhood's asking that we don't do this, we just do it the right way the first time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Wes Khan, who will be followed by Amy Parker, and then Efren Leon. Is Wes, Wes Khan here? All right, then, Amy Parker? All right, so we'll have Amy Parker, followed by Efren Leon, and then Eric Rhodes.
Thank you, Amy Parker, 9th Ward. Gas leaf blowers are the dirty cost of clean yards. Evanston banned them for the right reasons. It turns out that the ordinance is flawed, but don't suspend it, fix it. My humble suggestions. First, enforcement. Bilingual warnings that include reasons for the ban should go to property owners and contractors where possible, but fines should go to property owners only. Reporting wouldn't need intrusive photos if all we had to do was list an address and a time. People who can afford yard workers can afford fines, and clearly our friends in the lawn care community can't. Second, communications help. Provide a bilingual template about the value of less blowing overall that yard care companies can share with clients to reduce demand for hyper-clean outdoor space.
15 seconds.
Third, financial help. Expedite grants. Simply require current business registration and proof of residence. Get the money out there. Other communities are watching. We need to address mistakes and reaffirm our commitment to banning gas leaf blowers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Efren Leon, followed by Eric Rhodes, and then Julie Mirastah.
Buenas tardes, este, mi nombre es Efren Leon. Mi pregunta es, yo creo que todos los que estamos aquí queremos lo mejor para la familia de cada quien. Entonces, ahorita que nos ponen estas ordenanzas que nos agarran, pues como decimos nosotros con las manos en la masa, que no hayamos ni qué hacer. Nos dicen que hay fondos para nosotros para eso, preguntamos. Para los costos de la maquinaria que ocupamos nosotros, no, no es suficiente. Y además, mis compañeros y yo no la queremos. Lo que queremos es que nos dejen trabajar, que, que nos den. Yo quiero dar un ejemplo. El ejemplo cuando es, cuando construyo en un edificio grande ocupan una grúa grande para llegar hasta arriba. Nosotros, la grúa de nosotros es la sopladora al principio y al final, al principio de la temporada y al final de la temporada. Entonces, lo que queremos nosotros nada más es eso, que nos dejen trabajar.
15 seconds, 15 seconds.
Que nos den las seis semanas al principio y las seis semanas al final, es todo lo que estamos pidiendo todo. Gracias.
Hi, my name is Fran De León. Good afternoon, everyone. I only make, I wanted to ask you, what are we going to do with our families? This ordinance is really surprising us and changing us. You proposed you have a fund that will provide us a solution, but the fund is not enough. I only want to ask you to let us work. For example, when somebody built a building, they use a big machine to provide all the tools to finish the building. For us, we use, our supply is the leaf blowers. We just wanted to use to start in the first season and to end in the last season. I just want to ask you to let us to work.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eric Rhodes, who will be followed by Julie Mirastah, and then Gabriel Cummings.
Good evening. Eric Rhodes, I'm the president and CEO of St. Francis Hospital, and it's a pleasure and a privilege to be here today, speaking in opposition of the pilot initiative. You know, St. Francis has been an anchor institution and partner of the Evanston community for 123 years. We treat patients regardless of the ability to pay. 51% of our patient base is Medicaid, 6% is self-pay. And we do this because it's part of our mission, vision, and values, and something that we believe strongly in. We don't just invest outside of the hospital either. Around $20 million of community benefit from St. Francis goes to financial aid benefit as well with the costs associated with being able to serve the most vulnerable and disenfranchised. So that in, having to pay an additional amount of money for, you know, taxes when we comply with state and federal tax-exempt obligations will seriously prohibit our ability to treat those same patients. When we look at programs like the Living Room, like our partnerships with Peer and Trilogy, where we treat our behavioral health population, that will significantly prohibit our ability to do that. And so I'm obviously speaking out against, against the pilot program. So thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Julie Mirastah, who will be followed by Gabriel Cummings, and then John Irwin.
Good evening. As mentioned, my name is Julie Mirastah. I work with Eric. I'm the chief advocacy officer overseeing St. Francis Hospital, and I'm also here to speak in opposition of the pilot committee agenda item. Hospitals, unlike other nonprofits, are required by state statute to post their community benefits annually and to assess their property to ensure the value of their community benefit exceeds their hypothetical property tax. A 2012 state law established clear standards and dictates what charitable activities count toward a hospital. count toward a hospital meeting that charitable ownership test. This info is readily available to the public. That test I reference requires hospitals to conduct a professional assessment of their property every year and file what's called a PTX 300 form with the county assessor in order to satisfy that test. The test being the value of the hospital community benefits exceed what the hospital would pay in property taxes. The nonprofit hospital exemption has been upheld as constitutional and is the most comprehensive law in the country with respect to ensuring that hospitals are meeting the community benefit responsibilities under the tax-exempt test. I have a long list of other publicly available federal and state data points and reporting requirements, but our commitment in the last several years that I've been at Evanston has never been questioned, partially because we have all of these transparency mechanisms in place in Illinois.
Fifteen seconds.
Got it. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that hospitals do pay a number of taxes, including on non-exempt property owned by the hospital, water, sewer, natural gas, I could go on and on. But I'll just, you know, close by letting you know that, you know, we're invested in this community. Thank you for your time. Happy to share any of the information that I referenced earlier or invite you to the hospital to witness for yourself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gabriel Cummings, who will be followed by John Irwin, and then Kim Graul.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gabriel Cummings, and I'm the president of Evanston Hospital. We take our mission and our duty as a nonprofit seriously. We are proud to have contributed more than $288 million in community benefit in 2022 across North Shore, including $10.2 million in charity care for Evanston Hospital, for which we do not expect to receive payment. When costs increase, like those imposed by pilots, we have limited options to cover the cost. We are potentially forced to pull funds from labor or from the critical health services and programs we deliver, many of which directly support the underserved and uninsured. Examples of those programs include our community investment fund, the Erie Evanston Skokie Health Center, the Evanston Hospital Dental Center, Anne Community Health Center, and the Evanston Township High School Health Center. Beyond our voluntary support to multiple programs like those just mentioned, we contribute nearly $2 billion to the local economy through payroll, capital, and other expenses, as well as $13.9 million in certain property taxes over a 10-year period. We are proud to employ more than 4,000 Evanston Hospital team members who come to this city every week to shop, spend, volunteer, and serve its residents. As part of this community for more than 130 years, we share in the desire for Evanston to be a thriving, affordable, and equitable community, and we welcome ongoing collaboration as we always have to continue to make that happen. In conclusion, I ask this council to vote no on the formation of a pilot committee and welcome engaging in conversations on how we can work together in the best interest of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Irwin, who will be followed by Kim Graul, and then Elizabeth Hicks.
Good evening. I'm Dr. John Irwin. I'm a cardiologist, and I also serve as the chair for the Department of Medicine at North Shore Hospitals. This also includes Evanston Hospital. I'm also an Evanston resident. As you know all too well, the needs of our communities are complex, diverse, and significant. These are challenging times for all of our individuals and families, and as healthcare providers, we feel it every day when we hold hands, we see it every day when we look in our patients' eyes. These are exceptionally challenging times for our hospitals. Just a few short years ago, throughout the COVID-19, we stood on the front lines for patients, doing whatever it took to support our team members and procure difficult-to-come-by supplies, often as a premium. This also meant absorbing significant financial losses, including millions of charity care. The financial impact continues as costs for labor and supplies skyrocket, at the same time that our reimbursement is declining, many times not covering the cost of care. As an Evanston resident, I see its strength as community, its desire as a place where everyone can thrive. Tonight, I ask you to vote no on the formation of this pilot task force. The issues we need to solve together are too important and too complex to think these payments are the solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kim Graul, who will be followed by Elizabeth Hicks, and then Dave Ellis.
Good evening. My name is Kim Graul. I'm an Evanston resident and internal medicine physician at Evanston Hospital. I am also a physician at our Evanston Hospital Community Health Center, which offers free and discounted services in our community to those in our community who are economically disadvantaged and unable to obtain healthcare services through private providers. In 2022, our center cared for more than 3,600 patients through more than 8,000 visits. I have the privilege of seeing the powerful impact of programs like this that we at Evanston Hospital are able to support because we are a nonprofit, because we have a unique ability to connect with those we serve, and because we have worked in partnership with many of you who understand the value of what we do. Forming a committee to discuss pilots and pressuring nonprofit hospitals, who are already facing significant financial challenges, to potentially have to eliminate programs like this is not collaboration, and it is not who we are as a community. I urge you to vote no tonight on the formation of the pilot task force, and welcome you to visit us at the community center, if you haven't already, to see firsthand what we are all about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Elizabeth Hicks, who will be followed by Dave Ellis, and then Gracie Nimmer.
Hi, I'm a physicist with a PhD from the University of Chicago. I am an expert in combustion. My peer-reviewed articles have been cited by the aviation engine gas design community. Today, I'd like to tell you a bit about two-stroke gas-powered engines and some of the reasons that they are so bad for public health. The two-stroke engines used by many leaf blowers are fundamentally different than the four-stroke engine that powers your car. Because of the way they are designed, the oil that lubricates the engine is mixed in with the gasoline that powers the engine. Since the oil and gas are mixed, some of the oil will be burned along with the gasoline. The problem is that the oil in the combustion chamber isn't in the combustion chamber long enough to burn completely. This means that instead of just getting carbon dioxide and water, you'll end up with a potpourri of volatile organic compounds. Some of these are toxic on their own, like formaldehyde. After these volatile organic compounds are emitted, they rise into the atmosphere where they can interact with another product of leaf blower emissions, nitrogen dioxide. The volatile organic compounds and nitrogen dioxide react to form ozone. Ozone is highly reactive, and when you breathe it, it aggressively attacks your lung tissue. This is bad for everyone, but especially bad for people with lung diseases, like the 10% of Evanstonians who have asthma. So please don't think the two-stroke leaf blower engines are like small car engines. They're much dirtier and emit a much higher level of volatile organic compounds. Please protect public health by keeping the gas blower ban in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dave Ellis, who will be followed by Gracie Nimmer, and then Julian Pfeffer.
Dave Ellis, Seventh Ward. I spoke at the January 22 council meeting about the city violating the Open Meeting Act involving the lease and property of 909 Davis. Mayor Bis stated at the time that we were a million miles from violating the Open Meeting Act. Mayor Bis, we have traveled a million miles since then. The Attorney General's decision and binding opinion found that the city violated the Open Meetings Act regarding the lease and possible sale of the Civic Center in closed session, which the minutes recorded with a one-sentence summary. If you read the decision, it's clear, the city violated the law, and the contract the council voted on was in violation of the law. This is a Class C misdemeanor punishable by up to 30 days jail and a $1,000 fine. This is not what Evanston residents expect from their elected officials. The council should start this process over, as the AG recommended. The question of what to do with the Civic Center has been going on for over 20 years. There is no urgency to spend this kind of money without transparency and a clear path forward and public input. Council made a mistake with this. The way forward is to admit to the mistake, start this process over with committee work and our request for proposal. This project does not qualify as a no-bid contract.
Fifteen seconds.
Stop violating the Open Meeting Act and its intent. Do not make this situation worse by denying, rationalizing, or justifying your action. Let's have good, honest government in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Gracie Nimmer, who will be followed by Julian Pfeffer, and then Evgeny Stoljarov.
Hi, I'm Gracie Nimmer, a first-year student at Northwestern, and I reside in the Seventh Ward. My colleagues and I come here on behalf of 13 Northwestern student orgs to speak in support of the payment in lieu of taxes or pilot regarding specifically Northwestern's tax-exempt status. I represent Fossil Free NU, and I will read out the first part of the signed statement sent to you, council people. There is an inherent privilege that students hold attending an institution like Northwestern and occupying space in Evanston for four years. We believe it is our imperative to understand the community we are a part of, as well as the fraught history between Northwestern and Evanston, with histories of rent-lining and segregation that have created generational disparities for Black communities in comparison to their white neighbors. Northwestern's history of housing discrimination and patterns of hostility against Black students are interconnected with Evanston's. Today, such legacies of discrimination have resulted in a higher cost of living that disproportionately impacts Black and Brown folks in Evanston, leading them to leave the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Julian Pfeffer, who will be followed by Evgeny Stoljarov, and then Jeff Barini.
Hello, I'm here on behalf, I'm Julian Pfeffer, and I'm from the First Ward. I'm here on behalf of Students Organizing for Labor Rights, and I will read out the second section of the statement that Gracie began reading. With these inequities in mind, we believe that Northwestern has a rightful responsibility to use its capacity to give back to the city in an intentional way. A pilot task force would provide a platform for an open conversation about how Northwestern and other tax-exempt institutions impact the community. Similar institutions like Harvard and Boston University contributed $29 million to the Boston community in 2023, and Brown recently doubled its annual contributions to Providence. By voluntarily contributing to the local tax base, institutions like Northwestern can help alleviate financial burdens on municipalities and support essential services like education, public safety, and infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Evgeny Stoljarov, who will be followed by Jeff Barini, and then Matt Cotter.
I am here on behalf of Jewish Voice for Peace Northwestern, and before I read the last section, I'd like to wish all those who celebrate Ramadan Mubarak. A pilot task force would finally provide a framework for ongoing collaboration between NU and Evanston, allowing for transparent discussions and negotiations regarding existing racial and socioeconomic inequities. As members of the NU community, we understand the power of fostering good faith dialogue about how our institution can progress in its role as a neighbor to Evanston. The proposal is to establish a committee to simply explore pilots. It does not establish any specific policy. Without pilots, NU does not pay its fair share. Therefore, we, the 13 student organizations representing hundreds of NU students, urge the city to establish a pilot task force and hope you will consider our perspective when you vote today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Barini, who will be followed by Matt Cotter, and then Ray Friedman.
Good evening, Jeff Barini, Second Ward. I want to thank you for your support of pilots to date here, and urge you to continue that support by voting yes. The representatives of our excellent hospitals and the medical community said tonight that they're committed to talking and collaborating and working together, just not through pilot. This committee will create an objective, fact-based, transparent forum to review the tax-exempt property in Evanston, the value of that property, as well as the benefits of the major nonprofits that they bring to the city through their daily mission, through their in-kind donations and financial donations beyond their salaries and things like that. Councilmember, when you noted last time that this has been a longstanding issue, it rumbles beneath every interaction we have with Northwestern University. If you vote no, the issue does not go away, okay? When you get this committee started talking, you can begin to address the issue, and possibly they can craft a plan or agreement that could possibly put this issue to bed for 10 or 20 years if we get an agreement. That would be an enormous service to the community, so I urge you to vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Matt Cotter, who will be followed by Ray Friedman.
Good evening. My name is Matt Cotter. I'm a resident of the Second Ward here in Evanston, and I'm co-chair of the city's environment board. I'm here to speak in opposition to item HS1, the moratorium on the ban of gas-powered leaf blowers. We've heard from a lot of small business owners that they're having trouble with the way things are currently structured, and I want to support a lot of what they're saying. I think small businesses are the backbone of our community, and we need to absolutely get rid of the vigilante reporting, the picture-taking, and all the fear that's experienced. But we need to do that while moving forward on our climate agenda. We're in the midst of a dual crisis of climate change and biodiversity loss, and we need to stop rolling back progress because things are hard. If the burden is inequitable, which I believe we've seen, that, I think, indicates a lack of policy, then that we're not moving boldly enough. We need to keep moving forward so that everyone in the community is bearing the weight of this change and all these things that need to happen. So I urge city council to keep this in place. I commend city staff for all the hard work they've been doing to help ameliorate the current situation, and I hope we can keep moving forward and get rid of more pollutants, protect public health, and end the use of fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the clerk please add Councilmember Burns to the roll? The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Ray Friedman's, oops, Ray Friedman, Second Ward. I'd like to first compliment Mayor Bis on how he handled the rowdy crowd a few weeks ago, and the patience and calm and repeated warnings to agitators to calm down and leave peacefully, which was followed up by great work by Evanston Police Department, no arrests, and no one got hurt. Great work, everybody. Next, regarding public comment, you don't need to change the time allowed for public comment. The only thing you need to change is you're responding to all public comments and have that dialogue that's intended. You're now posting public comments. You should be able to respond to them as well. It's very obvious that you are keeping the Evanston residents out of the conversations and processes for most decisions when it comes to spending tax dollars, our tax dollars. Please don't spend any of our tax dollars without asking us first. And I don't want to discuss Envision 2045 until we have the discussion and plan for 2025. And why are we spending $750,000 on a consultant for this Envision 2045 now?
Fifteen seconds.
With a recession looming, financial security very unstable, and $929 billion in commercial loans coming due this year, we need to be very careful where we spend our tax dollars. Please take a closer look at the proposed spending on tonight's agenda, studies, consultants, geo-bonds.
Thank you very much.
And did we just approve $29 billion in new general obligation bonds?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the people who signed up on the-- I know, I know, I know. That, I know, I-- that concludes the list of people who signed up on the sheet of paper to speak. Dude, that concludes the list of people who signed up on the sheet of paper to speak. We now move to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Karen Kaplan, who will be followed by Steve Hart, and then, I promise, I promise you're gonna get here, Paul Breslin.
You probably already know why I'm here yet again, namely to address the recent disruptions at these meetings. We were all rightfully outraged when the neo-Nazis invaded the city council, but the Equity Commission ceasefire resolution was equally offensive, and it was backed by a council member. The Nazis yelling "See, Kyle!" call for the outright killing of Jews. The pro-Hamas ceasefire advocates yelling "From the river to the sea!" deny the Jewish state its right to defense. The result is the same in both cases. People like me wind up dead. By releasing a statement that aligned with one group, you opened the door for its counterpart, who followed the stench right to this chamber. Free speech is a sacred right, but neither group should ever find a mouthpiece in any of our city's leaders. I hope this painful lesson has been learned, so it never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Steve Hart, who will be followed by Paul Breslin, and then Jeannie Breslin.
I just want to correct the record. To my knowledge, I don't believe a council member supported the ceasefire resolution from the EEC. So I'll make sure that factual statements are made.
I think we can ask the public commenter to clarify in writing, and then we can learn more about what was being discussed on another occasion. Mr. Hart.
Greetings. Steve Hart, Third Ward. Just a couple points on the gas leaf blower topic. Simplest terms, gas leaf blowers are an abhorrent-- Simplest terms, gas leaf blowers are an abhorrent scourge on the neighborhood, the environment, the wildlife, and anyone that has the misfortune of hearing one. In fact, if I, if I ever hear one in the remainder of my life, it'll be too soon. So, thank you. But to the clerk, thank you for acknowledging the petition. I think you may have read that in, that there is, I think it was 603 at the time that I submitted it. We're now up to like 607 signatures. You all have the link, by the way, in the notes. If I may, I want to read a couple of comments of petition signers of some of the 607. All right? So one is from a gentleman called Ben Klitschke. You might recognize that name. He's on the leadership team of Nature's Perspective, which is a local Evanston-based landscape outfit. Anyway, they've already made the transition, and I'm just going to quote. Our clients and employees have greatly appreciated the transition away from the loud and polluting gas-powered machines. There have been blower restrictions in almost all North Shore states and villages over the last decade. When Evanston's ordinance was finalized, the city gave contractors all of 2022 and all of 2023 to figure out how to make it work. Folks who are now claiming they had no idea about the new ordinance are being disingenuous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Paul Breslin, who will be followed by Jeanie Breslin.
I apologize for my bad. I'm afraid that more in sorrow than anger, I have to talk about your bad. Mayor Biss and members of council, in making contracts behind our backs that commit millions of dollars of taxpayers' money, you have forgotten another contract, the social contract, which is measured not in dollars but in trust. That contract says that to be legitimate, the government requires consent of the governed. Three recent maneuvers by our city's government persuade me that it is time to withhold that consent. First came an attempt in 2023 to keep HRG's oversized Chicago Building proposal afloat, despite negative votes in the Land use commission and the Planning Development Committee. Then in council, a member moved approval and received no second. The same council member then moved to table approval for later vote. When that was defeated, the mayor urged him to withdraw it to avoid sinking the proposal. The former city attorney claimed that Robert's Rules of Order justifies this intervention. It doesn't. Rules of Order explicitly states that withdrawal must happen before voting on the motion begins. Any new proposal must go through the full approval process. Second came the complaint filed by the most livable city group in the Circuit Court of Cook County, which credibly alleges that negotiations for the NU stadium agreement involved, all right, I will stop here, and my wife will finish. She will start with the second item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is the previously alluded to, Jeanie Breslin.
Yes, Jean.
Sorry, Jean Breslin.
Second, the complaint filed by the most livable city group in the Circuit of Cook County credibly alleges that negotiations for the NU stadium agreement involve numerous closed meetings of the mayor and pro-stadium council members with representatives of Northwestern. Neither the public nor skeptical members of council were informed that these meetings took place, or what agreements were reached in them. Third came the illegal closed-session authorization of an exclusive contract with JLL to broker any future sale of the current city hall for a commission of 5% to 6%, estimated at 300,000 to 600,000 or more, and a 15-year, $37 million lease negotiated by the same broker. But this time you were caught. The Attorney General's review concluded that you violated the Open Meetings Act. This meeting must, this meeting must not be used to rubber stamp a contract so hastily and illegally made. I urge you to cancel it and to put out an RFP as you should have done in the first place. At the very least, if you have the slightest desire to regrain public trust, you must postpone the mandated revote on the JLL contract until a later open meeting, so that for once, we all have time to look before council leaps. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I believe this concludes everyone who signed up through any means to speak in person, presuming that's correct. We will now move on to those who signed up to speak online, beginning with Jenny Washburn, who will be followed by Mary Rosinsky, and then Jordan Mohammed. It looks like Ms. Washburn is no longer in the Zoom, so we'll move forward with Mary Rosinsky, who will be followed by Jordan Mohammed, and then Anna Grossman.
Hi, thank you very much. I have just three things I'd like to say. One is I agree 100% with Dave Ellis. It's time to unwind the lease-sale agreement with JLL. It was a decision that was made behind closed doors, and we've heard things about the city, from the city, about the civic center from the city engineer, but we have not seen any written estimates of what it would really cost to fix anything, and we haven't seen written reports on the conditions that she set, or what has been said, although many reports have been voided, and they don't seem to be existing at the city hall. So that's the first thing. Second of all, the sale of the city property, or lease of the city property, requires an ordinance of two-thirds council vote, and so nothing should be done behind closed doors and discussion on that. So that's kind of regarding the Open Meetings Act violation. The second thing I'd like to talk about is the public time. I know that we had those ugly comments by people last week and the week before. I don't think limiting time for the public that is making comments to you down to 30 minutes is the solving, but maybe we could do something if we had a time delay so that you could just shut it off if someone becomes that, and then they're just banned. The third thing I'd like to bring up is, I would, I think we could have a tax review committee for the nonprofits in the city to work together, so that we could all understand the benefits we give to each other, as well as the costs that we each have in terms of existing, coexisting together. It might open up great doors on sharing the hospitals and what they give to the community, and I think that they do give a lot.
Thank you very much.
And I think that, but also, just so that everyone knows, everything that they pay in taxes go to all tax-paying residents when it comes to water, vehicle.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jordan Mohammed, who will be followed by Anna Grossman, and then Evie Russell.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Mohammed. I'm a student at Northwestern, and I'm a resident of the First Ward. I first want to speak, just add to the people who emphasize the necessity to amend the leaf blower policy. It is clearly showing harm based on the public comments. There's a clear disparity in terms of who the people that are speaking at. We need environmental action, but we can't be saving other people's health at the expense of other people's livelihoods. So just want to speak out in terms of the necessity to amend the leaf blower ordinance. And then, two, I am primarily here to speak and urge you all to support the creation of a pilot committee. Emphasis on committee. This is about starting a conversation, particularly in terms of holding Northwestern accountable to contributing to the Evanston community. I'm not necessarily speaking on behalf of hospitals, but we know that Northwestern has a history of harm. We know that the benefit that Northwestern gives the Evanston community should involve input from the Evanston community. That is what a genuine relationship looks like. And there is a really necessity to increase accountability by increasing access for Evanstonians to be a part of this conversation. Establishing a pilot committee is establishing this conversation. It's no longer happening behind closed doors. Yes, so just affirming, please do support establishing the pilot committee so we can start that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Anna Grossman, who will be followed by Evie Russell, and then Amner Deleon.
Hi, good evening. I am calling from New Jersey. My name is Anna Grossman. We were inspired by Evanston and other communities like DC, and Irvington, and Larchmont, and Maplewood, and we also, as a town, banned gas leaf blowers, and indeed, we received an environmental award from the governor of New Jersey for that, an Environmental Excellence Award in the category of clean air. What you are doing in Evanston matters everywhere. It is a matter of environmental justice. Nobody should be forced to work eight hours a day, on and off, with a machine that is going to double their cancer rate. And we know too much about the deleterious effects of PM25 to roll back on this. You have grants for people up to $25,000. If the communication is the issue here, you are so generous in giving that grant, please execute on it, for their health, for everybody else's health, for landscapers, for residents, for the entire country. Get rid of this gas and oil guzzling machine that is harming communities all over. It is just another way for the gas and oil industry to destroy our health.
15 seconds.
And you cannot be a part to that. It is a public health matter, and it is unheard of to determine that something is deleterious to public health and then to roll back, even temporarily, when you have the funding to help people move forward for their own health.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Evie Russell, who will be followed by Amner Deleon, and then Sebastian Nalls.
Hi, I'm Evie Russell, Seventh Ward. Please table the JLL agreement, that's one. Number two, I do support the Pilot Task Force Committee to investigate whatever these operations contribute or not contribute, as in the case of Northwestern. Three, the resolution for the leaf blowers, in the translator who translated, the second person speaking Spanish did not translate what he said, and he said something like this. He said he does not want electric leaf blowers at all. So this is kind of the attitude. It's not just like, give us an extra three weeks this year. You cannot hold back this public health law that you did. Our health, the health of the environment, is too important. And then finally, resolution regarding public comment, please do not consider reducing the 45 minutes to 30 minutes, or reducing the three minutes to two minutes for other committees. This is not fostering dialogue, and it is not a reaction to uncalled-for, you know, Nazi comments and all of that. This is the kind of thing that when I asked Mayor Biss, when he first became our mayor, if he could extend our public comment, and he told me he does not believe public comment is a means to communicate to the council.
Thank you very much.
So that is something that has been in the works for a long time, in the mind of these people.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Amner Deleon, who will be followed by Sebastian Nalls, and then Jill Bellinger.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amner Deleon. I'm actually going to address in Spanish first, and then I'll, I'll do my self-translation, and I'll address, address it in English. Para los landscapers que están ahí, miren, es un problema de salud. Los blowers eléctricos sí trabajan. Yo tengo una compañía todo eléctrico, y podemos hacer las limpiezas de verano, de, disculpen, de primavera y de otoño. No le tengan miedo. Yo aquí estoy como para ayudarlos. Si ustedes quieren, llamenme. Ahí voy a dejar mi información después. Yo trabajo in New Jersey. All right, so I just addressed landscapers, telling them that the leaf blowers do work. I run an all-electric landscape company in New Jersey, and I'm always inspired to help out and, and give my knowledge out there. There's a lot of misinformation, and it's great what you guys are doing, because you have grants, and you have 18 months for implementation. The lack of knowledge out there should not, not have you roll this back. You do have the programs. Once, once landscapers start using the equipment, they'll realize all the health benefits. There are multiple health benefits, me being around and running an all-electric company.
15 seconds.
The health benefits for the employees and for, for also the homeowners. So, and then I'm here to help out. Anything that you need, please use me as a resource.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sebastian Nalls, who will be followed by Jill Bellinger, and then Ally Harned.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here to speak in support of the pilot task force that's coming to vote today. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who voted yes on the previous meeting. I know that there seems to be a lot of confusion on the part of some of the representatives that came here from, from the two hospitals that we have in Evanston. They talked a lot about some of the community benefits that they already give to the city in the form of, you know, direct compensation, or some of the programs that they do. But if we look at other pilot models across the nation, we have seen that not only is there, is there opportunity for direct compensation to a municipality, but there are also the community benefits credits that are given. And there are some, are some pilot programs that have institutions such as hospitals that only give community benefits programs. I see some of the programs that they claim are already in place. This is an opportunity for these institutions to come to the table to help craft this pilot program and something that can work within their budget, and ultimately, again, continue to have these conversations of how we make Evanston a better place for everyone. The idea that, you know, we shouldn't have these conversations from, from the jump because we already contribute, or we feel that we already contribute, is not enough. So again, I urge us to really sit together, have an opportunity to work and hash this out, and understanding too that in the end of the day, this pilot task force brings a recommendation to City Council. Ultimately, if City Council feels that whatever this task force comes up with is too much for us, too outlandish for any of these institutions, that the city of Evanston or City Council can say no.
Thank you very much. The, the next speaker is Jill Bellinger, who will be followed by Ally Harned.
Thank you. My name is Jill Bellinger, and I'm here to commend the advocates and public health experts at Evanston who push for the leaf blower legislation. Because as a longtime advocate for and expert on landscape, sustainable landscaping on a national level, I know how hard it is to stand up to an industry full of lobbyists that puts profit above all else. I don't doubt after hearing comments tonight that lobbyists have done their work here in Evanston as well. The lobbying, the landscaping and fossil fuel industry continues to push a false narrative that we cannot live without this one outdated and noxious device. In reality, we cannot live with it. I saw how hard Senator Laura Fine worked to get state regulation introduced in Illinois, and the literal death threats she received because of it. She told me that she had to have police posted outside her home, from people saying they wanted to beat her to death with a leaf blower. Sorry if that's offensive, but that's what happened. But here we are in 2024, considering a pause on progress, all because the landscapers want more time. There has already been 18 months to access funding, which is not commonly offered in these situations, yet none came forward. Can the issue not be rectified, rather than rolling back public health and worker health? Evanston law limits the idling of a commercial vehicle to five minutes. The gas leaf blower's emissions are far worse and would fail an inspection at the DMV. Do not let this machine back in your city to blow for hours across neighborhoods, parks, and schools. There's a better way of doing business. We can blow less. The Moe Blow model is a moneymaker, and it's dangerous for all of our health. I know the landscapers around the country that make a living focusing on civil health, remediation, and eco-friendly practices that landlords or owners are asking for. This legislation doesn't work if lobbyists and landscapers continue to bring them as goblins, and somehow more dangerous than carting around trucks.
Thanks very much. That concludes public comment for this evening. We now move to special orders of business. Would someone care to make a motion so we could have a discussion on item SP1?
I'll move item SP1. I'm sorry, it's listed for discussion, for?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I couldn't hear that. Could you repeat that, please?
I'll move it, but I'm sorry, is it listed for discussion, or is it listed for action?
It's for discussion, and that was the motion that you made at council to create the special order of business two weeks ago.
Okay, that's fine. So I'll move it.
Councilmember Reed moves that we discuss Resolution 25-R-24. Councilmember Hadakadis, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, if, if I may.
Councilmember Reed.
So, thank you, Mayor Biss. So as the person who, you know, put this particular set of recommendations together, you know, I somewhat take offense to speculation, you know, that is saying that this is meant to roll back public comment and roll back citizen participation, and that this has been some plan in the long, in the long run. It's really disingenuous for folks to, you know, state that, stuff like that. The point of this is to try to give the council tools. The point of this is to try to give the council tools that follow the Open Meetings Act, that follow the First Amendment to try to control the kind of hateful comments that were made recently. So just really want to walk through this quickly. The 30-minute limit allows us, the council has a 45-minute limit. I think we went over 45 minutes just now. And, you know, it's commonly been the practice for us to go beyond the 45-minute mark if we have a bunch of public commenters signed up. But we don't, if we have 45 minutes in the rules, we have no power to shut down public comment before the 45-minute mark. The Attorney General's, the Attorney General was mentioned quite a bit today. The Attorney General's office has made clear that 30 minutes for public comment is acceptable. And so then second, another change is someone mentioned that we'd be rolling back public comment from three minutes, from three minutes to two minutes, whatever. I heard someone say, well, that's just inaccurate. In fact, what I'm hoping to achieve here is a standard time allotment for folks to speak. So you know, I'm sure, I don't know how many public commenters today came in thinking, maybe I'll have two minutes, maybe I'll have three minutes. You made statements or you wrote statements, and then you only had a minute and 30 seconds or whatever folks had today. I actually am of the opinion that it could be a violation of the Open Meetings Act or a deviation, I should say, of the Open Meetings Act, the current policy that we have dividing by the number of speakers. I don't know. But I do think setting a standard, whether it's three minutes is what I proposed. The Attorney General's office has opined and said three minutes is acceptable. I think three minutes or two minutes, either one of those is fine. And then also, the next portion of this allows us to prioritize Evanston residents in public comment. It allows us to, or really, it allows us to deprioritize non-Evanston residents in public comment and move folks down on the list who aren't, who are unable to verify that they're Evanston residents, they're workers in Evanston, they're business owners in Evanston, they're folks who have contributed significantly to our community. And that allows us, the reason for that is it allows us, you know, if there are these folks that come in again, it allows us to shut down public comment, hopefully be beyond the 30-minute mark, shut down public comment before they have an opportunity to speak, and it not be based on their speech, it not be based on that, but be based on the fact that public comment is over. And so, you know, it's a fairly straightforward set of rules. As far as verification, I spoke with how folks would be verified if requested. I spoke with the clerk, and I think the clerk was, let the clerk speak for herself, but of the belief that her office has the tools that they need to be able to, sorry, to be able to effectively implement this and verify people if necessary. So I'll stop there.
Councilmember Saffron.
Thank you. I have a question for Alex. What are legal options for verifying speakers' identities? And can we have different sets of criteria for in-person and remote commenting, or does it have to be a uniform set of regulations?
Thank you, Councilmember Saffron, Alex Rugge, interim Corporation Counsel. So we cannot necessarily check IDs. We cannot require IDs of speakers. So it would potentially be difficult to check, verify that they're a resident. And then, public comment is not required to have a virtual option. That's something this city does as a policy. But if we have rules for one or the other, it's important to have them be uniform and how they sign up and the speakers.
Okay. It seems like in the past, the practice was that people would give their home addresses when they spoke. Was that volunteered information that was never verified?
That's correct, and that is very common for public comment throughout different municipalities.
Okay. I don't know if the clerk has thoughts, but I mean, I think the issue that we're trying to solve wouldn't be solved by truncating public comment, but I think having some means of verification or identification could certainly help prevent what happened previously.
Yes, we can certainly make it required on reform that people provide an address. I think the form.
Oh, point of order, point of order. It is very clear from the Attorney General's office that we cannot require people to give their address as a part of participating in public comment.
Well, we currently ask that people provide a ward and to identify whether or not they live in Evanston.
Right, that's different than an address.
So just to unwind here, Councilmember Saffron has the floor.
Yeah, so if a clerk does that in that scenario, I mean, we could request that, but we can't compel people to provide it. Is that how it works? I mean, my experience the last six years is we could probably do like a TSA pre-check for a lot of our public commenters because they're frequent commenters, but I don't know if our goal is to prevent what happened previously. What tools do we have that are legal but likely to work? If we can't verify identities, does anybody have any other suggestions? Because I think that's what we were aiming for here with this discussion item.
If I can respond, because if.
So Councilmember Saffron, do you want to direct that question to Councilmember Reed?
I'd like to direct it to anybody who would like to answer it.
Well, I mean, you have the floor at this time.
I have the floor, and I will cede the floor to whomever wants to turn on their light and offer a suggestion.
I think that's probably Councilmember Reed. Go ahead, Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, yeah, so I've looked into these angles. Again, the Attorney General's office, we can't require addresses. You know, it's unclear as to whether or not we can require IDs. I don't think there's been a case on that. But what this policy hopes to do is, you know, look at all of the Attorney General's opinions, cobble together those opinions to create a policy that allows us to, you said earlier that it would truncate public comment. The goal isn't to truncate, it's to allow us to shut off public comment after 30 minutes only if we choose to, because we know that, you know, we have, you know, folks who are anti-Semitic or racist that are planning on Zoom bombing our meeting. And so from what I've looked into, this is the clearest way that follows all of the Attorney General's opinions that would allow us to do that.
So I think Councilmember Saffron is reclaiming the floor, but before we go back to you, just I want to ask our Corporation Counsel, are we allowed to selectively enforce our rules based upon content-driven decisions?
No, we cannot regulate speech by content. And I will say to respond to Councilmember Saffron, I did reach out to other municipalities to see how they handle public comment, and I reviewed several of their public comment rules from other municipalities. A lot of municipalities choose to do agenda item-specific public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda for that evening, it goes to the end of the evening. And some municipalities have found that to be helpful. Other municipalities suggested that they don't offer a virtual option for public comment. So those were some of the options that were presented to me from other municipalities. I'm not suggesting that any one works for Evanston, but those were the options presented.
I mean, I would guess that you wouldn't have somebody say, I am here to make non-agenda racist comments. And so, I mean, that's part of the issue is that we have people who would be signed up for public comment under false pretenses. And I think if you take something that's 45 minutes and you make it 30 minutes, like that's the definition of truncating it.
Just to speak to your previous, I'm not going to get into the definition of truncation dispute, but to speak to the previous question, I think the point is, we are, we would like to avoid making any content-driven judgments, including the ones we've already made, right, that are consistent with our rules, but are, expose us to at a minimum, an allegation, fair or unfair, of violating the First Amendment. And so, so the idea is that if somebody signs up for the leaf blower item and starts making hateful comments, we don't have to worry about whether we're within our rights to cut them off from making hateful comments. We just boot them to the end of the meeting for making non-leaf blower comments.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, and I guess my other question is, as a result of the Open Meetings Act, what is the requirement, public comment needs to be contemporaneous with the meeting, or can we have a separate public comment period? Rather than do it how we do it where it's an agenda item at the top of the meeting, if we had, you know, there's been suggestions of things that are done in other states where public comment happens prior to the meeting. Is that something that would be allowed under the Illinois Open Meetings Act?
I do not believe so. I believe the Open Meetings Act requires every public meeting to have a period of public comment.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Kelly, followed by Hadacaris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Reed putting this on the agenda for discussion tonight because I do think that the disgusting and inappropriate comments by some out-of-town bad actors kind of require us to have a discussion like this. But what are we going to do about that if it happens again? I want to acknowledge that public comment is not a terribly effective way of advocating from a community member's perspective. That's a lesson I learned when I was on that side of the microphone. The best way of advocating for a position is to have conversations with council members offline in advance to allow some back and forth. And, you know, by its very nature, we can't have that dialogue in public comment. It's not set up for that, it's not intended for that. So public comment, not great, but it's the best we can do. It's required by state law, and it really is important, as frustrating as it is. It's something that council members, including myself, take very seriously. You know, I'm sure we could all hold up our notes and, you know, show you how seriously we're taking into account what members of the public are saying. And that's really, really important. And we have members of the public in Evanston who deserve to be heard in front of council, have a First Amendment right to petition the council, and I think that is going to be my priority. What happens if these bad actors come back? I don't want to let those bad guys win. And what they are looking for is to do something exactly like what we're talking about maybe doing here, which is curtailing public comment or somehow making it more difficult for members of the public to engage. So I think the best response for these bad actors, should they show up again, would just to be, you know, quick on the mute button, which the mayor has been the last couple meetings when these folks showed up. Hopefully, we see them coming and we can cut them off when speech turns hateful. I think if we make any changes that make it more difficult for members of the public to engage, we are inviting more bad actors to disrupt us on an ongoing basis. So at this point, I am not in favor of changing our rules for public comment. Having said that, even a few months ago, maybe we should have had a conversation before the bad actors came to town about, is there a better way we can do, you know, more collaborative and structured community conversation? There are some innovative things going on in other communities about, you know, having little roundtable discussions leading up to a council meeting. Too much to go into right now, a topic for another day, but I think for right now, I'm going to oppose any changes to our current rules that would make it more difficult for well-intentioned, honest, law-abiding, and good-hearted citizens of Evanston to engage with City Council.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Hadacaris.
Thank you. So I'd be interested in some research on the technological end to see about delays and staggered. So most of the problems soon be coming from online and folks that aren't even in the state. If we could look into that, so that there be a five or 10-second delay, I know in some cities that's done, and it's done in some other types of platforms and venues. So I think that that could help because I don't, I think we should try to see what we can do to avoid subjecting people to that speech as well as, you know, do whatever we can to preclude giving that platform to the hate speech. So I don't know if the staff could look into the possibility of delays with comments so that they could be previewed, they could be reviewed before, and then just cut out.
Councilmember Hadacaris.
I think the time limit that Councilmember Reed put forward as a potential tool sounds interesting. I think in reading the suggestion, it would take that the mayor or two members of council could ask for public comment to be extended. I think the last two times when we had.
Just point of order, it's the exact opposite. It's not extended, it is to have it shut down.
Shut down.
It's the exact opposite of that, yeah.
Okay. So at the 30-minute, so when we had the hate speech, I think there was that moment of, you know, pause where we looked like, what can we do? I think, you know, we would have been in a much worse situation if we'd had a very short public comment, and we would have been 10 minutes in and having to deal with that and not have the 45-minute limit. Maybe, so Councilmember Reed, since you put forward the suggestion, what would be the mechanism of extending public comment past the 30 minutes? Because it is important to get people's opinions out, especially people who are contributing in the conversation.
The point is, there is no mechanism for extending it. There's, just as it stands today, it would not, public comment would automatically go on beyond the 30-minute mark, just as it automatically goes beyond the 45-minute mark. But this creates a mechanism that at 30 minutes, either the mayor unilaterally or two council members, similar to a motion to hold, could shut down public comment at 30 minutes. So it's really a mechanism to shut it down, not to extend it. The extension is automatic.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Burns.
I was just going to say, especially because this is for discussion, it sounds like we need more time on this, obviously. It's not for action. We got a big agenda tonight, so I just, I'd like us, it'd be nice to move past this. Take some notes, you know, reach out to staff between meetings, and we can figure it out after that, but we got a big agenda.
Well, on that point, the only person left with a light on at this time is Councilmember Reed, who's got 50 seconds left.
Yep, I'll close out. One, I will say to my colleagues who, you know, described this as, I think it's unfair to me, as one of your colleagues described this as trying to limit public comment or truncating it or something. Councilmember Newsma, you said something that I wasn't a big fan of. The point of this is, we do not have the ability to control hate speech. It's a protected speech, unfortunately. And what I think is ridiculous is if we get to, there could be a day where we have 30 minutes worth of Evanston residents giving public comment, and then we have these hate groups come on, and we either have to allow them 15 minutes of just allowing them to say what they want to say, or we do what you're suggesting, and we cut them off, and then they turn around and sue us, and then we have to give Evanston taxpayer money to someone who is saying anti-Semitic stuff. That's ridiculous. If we create rules that allow us to shut down public comment, not based on the content of their speech, but based on, you know, the fact that they're not an Evanston resident, you said that it makes it more difficult for Evanston residents to give public comment. What in this policy makes it more difficult for a current Evanston resident to give public comment?
Councilmember, can I ask you to wind your remarks down? You're over time.
All right, I withdraw my motion on this.
Did you say you withdraw your motion?
Yep.
Okay, well, the motion is drawn, there are a couple lights on, but I think that ends the discussion. So we now move to item SP two. Is there a motion relative to item SP two?
Oh, I'll move item SP two. And I would appreciate if someone would, I can get. And I would appreciate if someone would, I can just give me that, which can clarify this.
Councilmember Harris.
So, we just limited our own discussion on SP1, and I feel some kind of way about that, Councilmember Reed, just going back to that.
I didn't catch what Councilmember Reed was saying. His microphone is breaking up.
So, I think there's two different issues that have been raised. One is Councilmember Reed made a motion on SP2 and is kind of asking people out of courtesy to give him a second, even if they don't like the idea. The other is that Councilmember Harris was in line to speak when Councilmember Reed withdrew his motion, which cut off the debate, and she was expressing disappointment in not having the opportunity to participate in the discussion.
Yes. So I will move SP2, but I needed that to go on record. I had something to say, and we cut us off.
Councilmember Reed moves discussion of the delivery fleet fee, and Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Am, am I recognized?
Yes, Councilmember Reed.
And my apologies, Councilmember Harris, the thing that I heard last was that I was the last. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
You're able to hear me?
Yes, we are able to hear you.
Okay. And my apologies, Councilmember Harris, I guess there's a bit of a delay, so just forgive me. But my apologies, Councilmember Harris, my understanding was that I was the last person in line to speak. That's what I heard last, and so, my apologies. On this item, the only thing I want to clarify is, you know, another Evanston Now special where, you know, said Reed wants to tax your Amazon deliveries. This is not a tax on Amazon deliveries. This is a tax on, this would be a, a, a charge for fleets that are operating in our city, that are, you know, burning exhaust here in the city, that are blocking the streets, you know, as they're making deliveries, that are, you know, taking away from our local businesses and our ability to, to support our local businesses because so much of this is moving to Amazon. So, I just want to clarify, because this is another Evanston Now special, this is not a tax on your, your individual packages. This is a tax on the business that, you know, that, you know, essentially would be negligible to, to the individual user. So, I'll, if anyone wants to speak on this, we can. If not, I'll withdraw the motion. And we can continue to, the practice of, you know, raising property taxes instead of shifting the burden to larger billion-dollar corporations like Amazon, like some of the others.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Newsma, followed by Burns.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So, Councilmember Reed, I respect you are trying to figure this out for us and get us in a good place. But I received emails today from senior citizens saying, I can't shop. I can't go shopping. I can't get these items. And we know that while we may be taxing Amazon, everything trickles down to the people who are spending the money. So while we're taxing Amazon, Amazon is going to tax our residents for the change in the cost of the items. So that brings me great concern, especially for those that are unable to get out, do shopping. While it may take away from some of our businesses, I think we need to consider the greater good, and I am not for continually taxing to get to the greater good. I think we have to look at our budget in a different, you know, way that we do things. Taxing, 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 I've always said that, is troublesome to me. So, I am not in favor of this. I hope that we can find other ways to make Evanston more affordable. So I just wanted to go on record. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not, you know, kind of philosophically opposed to heading in the direction that Councilmember Reed has suggested, but I have completely different reasons than the ones that are in front of us. From an environmental perspective, it's actually better for one truck to make 12 stops than for 12 cars to make 12 separate trips. So, from a climate action perspective, I'm not sure that is a, a very strong argument in favor of this. What potentially is a stronger argument is from an economic development perspective and acknowledging the impact of Amazon and other online retail, retailers on our small businesses in town. And so that is the angle that I would like to approach this from. Like, what can we do, if anything, to help support our small businesses? And that's a conversation I'd like to have. Not ready for prime time, not ready to have that discussion this evening at council. I'm not even sure it's ready to refer to a committee, but, you know, maybe if, if we do a little bit more homework than a referral, more along those lines would be appropriate. So, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Burns.
I'm actually going to no comment on this one. Thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed, who's got three and a half minutes left.
Thank you. Two things. One, to Councilmember Harris's point, if, if you go on Amazon Now and you look for, you look for an item, whatever the item is, and you choose to have that item delivered to you, to an address that you have in California, or you choose to have that item delivered to you, to an address that you have in New York, Illinois, whatever state, the price of that item is going to be the same. So, and, and New York, and California, and Illinois, and New Jersey all have different vehicle registration fees. They all have different gas prices. They all have different, all kinds of different regulations that make it slightly either more or less expensive to operate in that particular state or jurisdiction. And so, I see this is no different than that. There's not going to be a special tax, you know, I, I, I don't imagine that they're going to put a special fee just for Evanston residents on there. They're, they're going to do what they do now, which is, it's the same price. It's Amazon. It's a huge billion-dollar company. This isn't, you know, something that's probably even going to make them blink. And then two, second to Councilmember Newsma, the, the climate action, I certainly agree with you. I, I'm fully aware. And again, can we stop just going with Evanston Now narratives? This is not about, of course, it is more environmentally friendly for the one Amazon truck to go around than have 12 different vehicles. The reason there's a climate argument here is more environmental justice, I guess, if you will, or, you know, is because there's an incentive to use green vehicles. Amazon is deploying, you know, electric fleet vehicles in, in other places. They're not using gas-powered vehicles. They're using e-bikes to make deliveries in other places. In New York City, they're walking around making deliveries. And this ordinance would encourage them to do that by not charging them for those electric vehicles, not charging them for those e-bikes, not charging them for the person that's walking around making deliveries. So that's the climate portion of this. And of course, the, the idea is to support and encourage folks to ride their bike or walk to our local businesses and, and frequent those. I'm all for that. So I just want to clarify those two things. You go on Amazon Now, you, you make a purchase, you decide to have it shipped wherever, it's going to be the same price, other than obviously the local state and, and taxes. That's going to be the only difference. But the item itself is going to be the same. So, I'll, I'll stop there.
Thank you very much. Seeing that no one else is requesting to speak, that concludes special orders of business for the evening. We now move to the consent agenda. I've been informed that item, so the way, the way this works, by the way, is the Administration and Public Works Committee was canceled owing to a lack of an in-person quorum this evening. So, all items on the APW agenda moved to council with no recommendation, favorable or negative. I am told that item A13 was going to be pulled at APW. How that occurred, so that's, that is going to be skipped, both from the consent agenda and from discussion or, or action later tonight. Are there other items besides A13 that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
P1 and P2.
P1, P2. HS1.
A11 and A12.
A11, A12.
HS2 and FB1.
HS2 and FB1.
A2 and ED1, please.
A2 and ED1. So just, got a long list already. Just to keep you up to date on where we are so far, so far removed are A2, A11, A12, A13, P1, P2, HS1, HS2, FB1, and ED1. What else? So I'll just read them one more time and see if there's anything else. A2, A11, A12, A13, P1, P2, HS1, HS2, FB1, and ED1. If there are no further requests, then I would entertain a motion. Oh, oh, sorry, Councilmember Hadekakis.
You can take A10 out.
A10. Everybody ready?
I just, I just want to note, I'm not taking it off consent, but item A17, I'm just confirming that is for action, which is correctly noted in the agenda. The memo, however, says introduction, so I just want to make it clear that A17 remains on consent for action.
A17 is for action on the agenda and would, would be, this would be final action, should it remain on the consent agenda. Thank you for the observation, Councilmember. Well, I would entertain a motion if-
So move.
All right.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves the consent agenda with the exception of items A2, A10, A11, A12, A13, P1, P2, HS1, HS2, FB1, and ED1. Councilmember Harris seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Hadekakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordan.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye. With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the 11 exceptions just read is passed. This brings us to item A2. Councilmember Newsma, would you care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A2, approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity for the period ending January 26th in the amount of $11,278.67.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Harris seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Hadekakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordan.
I abstain.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye. With eight voting in favor and none voting against and one abstention, the motion carries and the activity is approved. Now on A10, Councilmember Newsma.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of contract extension for a professional services agreement with Safe Belt Incorporated for a commercial plan review of Northwestern University's Ryan Field Stadium project and a budget increase not to exceed $50,000, and extension to June 30, 2024 for supplemental plan review and inspection services.
Councilmember Newsma moves approval of the contract extension just described and the budget increase just described. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll? I abstain.
Councilmember Hadekakis abstains. Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
I apologize. Which item?
This is item A10.
Oh, I'm sorry. Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordan.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye. With eight voting in favor and none voting against and one abstention, the motion carries and the contract extension is approved. Now on item A11, Councilmember Newsma.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of a contract with Jones Lang LaSalle Midwest LLC for real estate services.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves approval of a contract with Jones Lang LaSalle. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Burns. I'm sorry, I didn't see the screen. Councilmember Kelly, followed by Burns.
Thank you. So, I would like to move to amend this contract. Given that this was a no-bid contract that was improperly executed, that's why we're here this evening, not only does it give the exclusive representation for, for leasing property, but it also gives the exclusive representation to sell the Civic Center, which we haven't discussed at all. So, that's a separate contract. The residents are owed, you know, that to be RFP'd out, the selling of the Civic Center. Commissions, you know, real estate commissions are not fixed. They're flexible. They're competitive. That should be an RFP process. So I would like to, and I'll send the amended language, I'd like to strike in the first paragraph, the sentence that starts with, "and the disposition of the current site," and ends with the assignment, and also the entire paragraph of compensation, section B. That should be, again, we should be issuing an RFP for that. So I'll send that amended language.
Hold on, Councilmember. Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that. I just want to make sure, because I was going to make, I think, a similar amendment, and I think that captures it all. And, and we have been in touch with JLL, who is aware of the, these amendments, I believe. Luke, if we had a conversation about this, to just make, I want to make sure I'm following this amendment correctly. But they are agreeable to this amendment, and therefore, I was going to make the amendment, but I will second this, as long as it captures what we discussed and also is, is what JLL agreed to.
Sure.
So, Councilmember Kelly moves to amend this item as just described. Councilmember Burns, second. Mr. Stowe.
Sure. Good evening, Councilmember Burns. And our understanding is that section 5B, I think, is what Councilmember Kelly is suggesting. If that's true, then that is correct. Staff in JLL are fine with section 5B being struck, and I'll let Mr. Zalmasak confirm if you agree with that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Clerk Mendoza, members of the council, and Paul Zalmasak, Economic Development Manager. We can strike 5B. We, we have confirmed that with JLL. I just want to also just clarify that we, we never would have listed the property for sale. It would have always been an RFP, so this is a real, by eliminating that section, it, it's fine.
Yeah, if I could say- Let me just interject on a technical point. So, Councilmember Kelly's amendment just came through, which strikes, I, I think, totally correctly, another clause in paragraph one that refers to the same issue. She prefers to strike "and the disposition of current site at 2100 Ridge Road, Evanston, Illinois 60201." So I assume that's-
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So, oh, okay. So, Councilmember Burns, you're in line, but let's let Councilmember, Kelly still has the floor. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. And I just want to say, the RFP, it's not about, it's an RFP for the service of, as a agent to sell. I mean, commissions vary, just like they do for leasing as well. So it's not just about an RFP on, you know, the Civic Center itself, but it is important that residents have, you know, have sort of a, you know, like a market program. How are they going to list it? I mean, there's all kinds of things that go into an RFP for, for agents when you give them exclusive right, whether it's to lease or to, or for selling. So, so thank you. I have one more amendment, too, but I, I went, would prefer to do that after this one.
Right, and that would not be in order until this is dispensed with. Councilmember Burns.
I, I just want to quickly say that my understanding, the reason why I seconded this and would, would have moved to amend it myself is, in conversations with staff, they said, one, none of what, what we're going to amend here, assuming it approves, was something that was a jailbreaker for JLL, and it also wasn't something that we intended to exercise. The contract, this particular contract ends, and, help me out, Luke, July 13th, and so, and, and my question to staff was, is it written in a way where all of these points would outlive the contract, which is the case in some agreements? And, and I was told that, that's not the case. So, we would have just allowed the contract to expire, and therefore, none of the, none of these commitments- of these commitments would have, um, uh, held up. So, but, and, so because of that, here we are, and, and this is not a controversial issue, we'll pass this, I'm sure, and move on to the next, next thing. Thank you.
Uh, would the clerk please take the role on councilmember Kelly's amendment to strike the, um, the twenty-one hundred Ridge, uh, and commission language from the contract?
Councilmember Hakkatis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordin.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed. Could you repeat that, please?
Councilmember Reed, we, I think I heard aye, but I don't want to misrepresent your vote.
Yes, aye.
All right, with nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the, uh, item is, uh, amended as previously described. At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back for a second opportunity to councilmember Kelly with three and a half minutes left.
Thank you. And I'd also like to amend this to remove, um, in, in paragraph five under compensation, um, it says, "We'll pay one full market, market commission." I understand that is a term that's used among the professionals, but that isn't, we are, there is an obligation to tell us what the percent is or what the dollar amount and number is. You can't just say, um, "One full market commission." That is owed to the client. So I would like to see that, um, struck and replaced with the percentage of the commission. And I'll send that along right now.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, so councilmember Kelly makes a motion that I candidly didn't fully follow, so I'm waiting to see it in writing. Councilmember Suffordin seconds. Uh, councilmember Kelly, do you want the discussion to continue while you're putting this in writing, or do you want us to, to stand at ease?
Yeah, I'll have one minute, uh, thirty seconds.
No, I really, really didn't. All right, well, while, while we're waiting on the amendment to arrive, councilmember Burns, uh, is, has four minutes left.
I just, Paul, uh, wanted to, I'm not even clear on this amendment, I'm still trying to make sure I understand it, but can you, I'm sure you're clear, so can you speak to this at all?
Thank you. Um, I am not clear on why councilmember Kelly is asking for it. This, this, and she, she can explain that, but this, this is the lease that, or sorry, the comp, the, the commission that the, that the landlord would be paying J L, J L L for the lease.
Correct.
I'm not sure.
It's a basic, um, what you want to do is protect against conflict of interest. So they, as they're our exclusive representation, they are obligated to tell the client what the commission is. We need to know that, what the commission is, to ensure that there isn't some, you know, conflict. And so that's a normal, that's normal. You say it's whatever the percent is or the dollar amount, but that should not be withheld from us on a legal grounds. They have to tell us what the commission is. So it's completely, um, irregular for us not, for as the client, not to know what that commission is.
And, and, and you're referring to the commission on the, uh, nine oh nine, right?
Correct. So they're representing us. So if you go to a place and you get, we don't know, like, what the commission is, we should know that, that is our right as the client to know what their commission is.
Have we, have we brought this up with J L L yet?
Right. Um, I, I, if, if I may, I disagree, I don't think it's important for us to know, to be honest with you. I mean, uh, what we needed to know was, what is the economic impact to the city of Evanston and the taxpayers? And we described that clearly in our lease, and we, we know what the costs are.
And you're saying that in part because we're not paying the commission, right?
We're not paying the commission. This is a, this is a transaction. I mean.
But that's a right, that's irrelevant, because if someone was getting.
So let's just hold, so at this time, councilmember Burns has the floor.
Yeah, so, uh, right now, I'm going to vote no on this, only because of the way I process is, is that corp, our corporation counsel, counsel Ruggie, was concerned about us making any amendments, um, going outside of just ratifying this and, and making amendments. The reason why I was supportive of the last one is because, um, is if we can, if both parties agree on the amendments, then there's no issue there. And so we haven't discussed this with J L L at all, I don't, I don't think.
Right.
We haven't brought this up with them, so.
We have not.
Yeah, I'm going to be a no because of that. Maybe it's something that they would agree to even without amending the contract, but, or not, maybe it's not even relevant, as Paul said, but I do think we should at least have that conversation, which is why ahead of this meeting, I worked with staff to get them to reach out to J L L, have a conversation with them before the meeting, so I wasn't just springing this on everyone up here. But yes, I'm going to vote no because of that, that's all.
Yeah, may I just add one comment?
Yeah, so, so, um, the, we did it in some sort of a funny order, uh, so councilmember Kelly does, again, sort of have the floor, um, because we kind of took it away from you while you were typing, so go ahead.
So, you know, the commission's rolled into our price. I mean, let's be clear on that, that's rolled into the lease. We have a right to know that. And I did ask for that before, Paul, and some, some staff member, I don't know who it was, replied saying that they wouldn't tell us. So that either J L L, I don't know who's not being straight, but that has been asked before, I sent it in a list of questions that I sent, and, um, I believe the answers were given to the entire council. So that question has been asked before, we are owed an answer. That gets rolled into our lease.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on this second amendment?
Councilmember Hakkatis.
No.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Newsma.
No.
Councilmember Burns.
No.
Councilmember Suffordin.
Yes.
Councilmember Revel.
No.
And councilmember Reed. Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
With three voting in favor and six voting against, the motion carries and the item is not amended. Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on, uh, this contract, which has been, uh, on this, on this contract, which has been now amended the first time, but not the second time?
But I have an amendment still, because we're to vote on this, to ratify, right?
We were about to, because no one's hand was up.
My hand was up, sorry, it's tricky, sorry.
Uh, at this time, no one wants to speak for a first or second time, with two and a half minutes left, councilmember Kelly.
So I would like to, um, amend this to send it back as an RFP. Um, this is, this was done improperly. Um, this should have been an RFP. Uh, the rates vary, commission rates vary, there's a lot at hand here. This should be, as the, um, as the A G's office stated, um, they've said that this should be brought back with sufficient public recital and discussion, um, before we ratify this. And that has not yet happened. We have not had the discussion about whether we want to lease, um, or not, that happened in closed session, and that needs to happen in open sessions. So I would like to move that this be sent back to staff, this lease entirely, or, I'm sorry, this contract, and that instead we, we put out a, an RFP, just like we're going to do now, um, and I appreciate that for the Civic Center. This should also, from the outset, have been an RFP and not a no bid contract done behind closed doors.
Is there a second for this motion? The motion fails for lack of a second. And now, seeing no further lights, would the clerk please take the role on the contract, which again was amended the first time, but not subsequently?
Councilmember Hakkatis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
I'd like to move that this is held over, there are a lot of questions yet to be answered.
We're, we're in the middle of voting, do you vote yes or no?
Well, I tried to ask this before, but I was unable to because of the technology. So this really needs to be held, um, there are many questions that remain, we haven't had the discussion, I think this should be held over.
Councilmember Kelly, do you vote yes or no?
I'd like to know if there's a second.
Point of order, I guess if there was a technological issue, we do have to give a member a chance, uh, because it moved very quickly from her last motion to this. So I, I doubt it's going to, whatever's going to happen is going to happen, but I think just given the chance.
Uh, Ms. Ruggie, would you weigh in here? I've, I've, I'm not aware of the time that it's allowable or even, that it's required or even allowable to stop a roll call halfway through, but please weigh in, I'm, I'm not the lawyer around here.
Thank you, Mayor, the roll call has initiated, so it needs to be completed.
All right, a point of, point of order, the, the, hold on, Claire, the point of order, the Open Meetings Act and the Attorney General's Office again, has made it clear that, um, when you have virtual participation, if a member has a technical issue, that you must grant them the opportunity, uh, to, to, to do whatever it is that they, they want to do it. What I just heard councilmember Kelly say is that she had a technical issue. You called one person's name, and it went very quickly from her last motion to calling of the roll. I don't think it would hurt us, I doubt the motion's going to succeed, but it wouldn't hurt us, she just let her make the motion.
She was successful in making three amendments during the course of this process, there's not a technological issue here, there's just an effort to close the roll after it's already been opened, this is just, it's not a proper way of running a meeting. And as you say, there's not going to be support for this anyway, so what, what are we, why are we fighting about this?
Because we could be violating the Open Meetings Act, that's my concern. I don't know if there was or wasn't a technical issue. She said there was, so I'm going to take a council member at the word that she had some kind of issue.
Councilmember Kelly, did you say there's a technical issue with your Zoom?
I was trying to make that hold, and I was, I, I, it seemed like you just went over me, but maybe it was my mic. But I'd like to hold this, again, we have not.
Hold on, we're, we're definitely not going to just not resolve this procedural matter. We're in the middle of a roll call, if we're obligated by the Open Meetings Act to stop the roll call, we'll ob, we'll do that, but let's not, let's not get on to anything else at this time. Uh, Ms. Ruggie, could you please give a, a final ruling here?
Thank you, Mayor, if you could just give me one second.
Uh, please.
As far as efficiency, would have been easier just to let her make her motion to hold, no second happens, and then we would have been on with it.
Mayor Bis, upon review of the Open Meetings Act, I don't see that directly in the Open Meetings Act, I'm not sure if councilmember Reed is referring to a, an opinion issued by the A G's office.
It's an opinion, yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't have that readily available.
All right. In an abundance of caution, we're going to stop the roll call and allow councilmember Kelly to make this motion. Everyone has the choice of whether or not to second it. Councilmember Kelly, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, please, yes, I would like to motion to hold this, again, as.
All right, councilmember Kelly moves to hold this item, is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second. Is there any further procedural, uh, item that people would like considered before a roll call? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Hakkatis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
No.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen. Aye. Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suffordin.
No.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. Uh, this brings us now to item A twelve, councilmember Newsman.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of sub, of sub-recipient agreement with connections for the homeless to implement the participatory budgeting rent assistance program to increase housing affordability and provide relief to low-income and underhoused and, excuse me, and underhoused Evanston residents.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Newsman moves approval of the sub-recipient agreement, councilmember Nguyen seconds, is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed followed by Kelly.
Yeah, I, I would just, is someone from Connections here or?
Uh, yes, they are.
Okay, yeah, I just have questions about the, uh, what's the program that you all are planning to implement? And how, how do you plan to use the funds? Uh, one, I'll say, this is really exciting, this is something, obviously, that came out of the P B process, this is what participatory democracy looks like, um, and so I'm really excited about this, uh, funding, uh, moving forward. Uh, I'm just, uh, curious, I think, both from I and the public certification, uh, about, uh, exactly how you plan to utilize these funds.
Sure, good evening, um, City Manager Stowe, Mayor Bis, City Clerk Mendoza, councilmembers. Um, in discussions with city staff.
Could you please identify yourself, both for the record and the councilmembers who are on Zoom?
Gosh, I thought I had it that time. I'm Betty Bog, I'm CEO at Connections for the Homeless. Um, in discussions with staff, what they have talked about with us in implementing this is the administration of stipends, I, I apologize, uh, subsidies for rental assistance as well as case management and housing location services for this funding. So this is work that we do in general.
And will this be open to, uh, is there, will this be open to any Evanston resident? How many folks do you anticipate being able to assist with this?
We'll, we'll follow with whatever the sub-recipient agreement says. So, but, but we do not have a drafted sub-recipient agreement at this time.
Uh, Ms. Flax, do you want to, or, I'm sorry, Director Flax, do you want to?
Sarah Flax.
Talk about that sub-recipient agreement?
Yeah, Sarah Flax, Community Development Director, um, thank you. Um, one of the things that the Participatory Budgeting Committee, um, stated was they expected, um, at least twelve months of support in rent assistance, and their estimate was, um, fifteen hundred dollars a month on average. So the only thing we have at this time is an estimate, is the number of yearly leases that would help support, and, um, we're not prepared to try to make a decision on exactly how many will, people will be helped, we need to find out what kind of help people need, but for the most part, most, um, of our landlords are not willing to take on somebody who, without a, um, twelve-month rent subsidy.
Thank you, and my big question is just, this will be available to every Evanston resident, uh, who qualifies and is in need, correct?
Yes, and, um, ARPA is a little different from most of our other federal sources. It does not have absolute rent, um, income limits, the way the home and E S G programs do. Um, you can, um, help people based on geography, anybody in a qualified census tract, for example, can get help. So we will probably have a mix of different people, um, with different qualifications. Um, one of the things that I think is, um, important is that Connections also handles our Home T B R program and our E S G, and one of the things they can do is fit people who are, uh, needing assistance to the most appropriate source to help them, which is very important.
All right, thank you very much, I just want to, uh, make sure that I'm, uh, I'd love to work with the team to make sure that, uh, you know, we can, uh, you know, if we're going by the census tract, uh, using that, um, you know, love to work with the team to identify either eighth ward, uh, housing providers or eighth ward residents, uh, who, uh, would qualify for this assistance. Thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So, um, let's see, I have a couple of questions about this. Um, also, I, I agree with the, the, um, participatory budgeting program, very exciting, um, I hope we will continue that in the future. So what about the general assistance fund? I know in the past, general assistance has paid out somewhere between six fifty and eight hundred a month towards rent payments, why wouldn't we keep this in-house?
Good day, members of.
Okay, yes. Good day, members of the City Council, Ike Ogbo, Director, Health and Human Services Department. When it comes to general assistance, it is a needs-based program, and it requires a number of criteria for individuals to, um, to qualify. And not only that, we simply don't have a significant budget to accommodate, um, every community member in Evanston. So the participatory budget, as it alludes, will be able to cover a significant amount of individuals other than what the general assistance would be able to cover.
Well, that would go into the general, I'm saying, why can't we bolster our general assistance program with this?
So this is an item that we can, if the council is willing, make some adjustments and probably bring it to City Council for budget discussion. But as it stands, we simply just do not have the capacity or the staff to even carry out this activity.
Okay. So I know in the past we did. We have done it before. I guess, I think I would be more comfortable having this go to the Housing and Community Development Committee prior to council. I mean, this is a large sum of money, and I know right now we have a lot of need with the residents on Wesley, and to be, really be able to discuss how this is going to be best used to serve our Evanston residents. I'm concerned with, not about Connections for the Homeless per se, but outsourcing it to a third party. I, I think I would like to see our Housing and Community Development Committee discuss this, and, you know, as a focus group, really decide what would be the most appropriate, where would be the most appropriate venue to allocate it, as well as how it should be allocated. And I guess that I also have questions that I think would, should be answered, like, I don't know how much of this money would actually go towards staffing if it was with Connections for the Homeless. I know we could say, oh, 100% will go towards rent, but money's fungible, so we're paying, you know, another overhead. And, you know, can we ensure that it's only for Evanston residents? And I know, you know, Ms. Boggs said, whatever we stipulate. But again, the oversight, we know it's tighter when it's in-house, when it's our, when the money is within the City of Evanston, a public body. So again, I guess, I would like to move that this be sent to the Housing Community Development Committee to assess and decide on both how it's used and who, how it gets allocated.
Councilmember Kelly moves that this item be referred to the Housing and Community Development Committee. Oops, sorry. Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay. Thank you. And then, okay, so I have a couple of questions then, if Ms. Boggs could, then I guess I would like to have it held over so we can have a tighter description as to what type of programs the money will be used for, ESG, TIBR, or whatever they are, what other services will be provided with the money, job training, education, local employment, and, you know, how much would go towards overhead, staffing, all of that. I think we need to know, too, Councilmember Reed's questioning, you know, what will this look like, this 800, I think it's 800,000? So I would like to hold it to get at least a more comprehensive explanation from Connections for the Homeless.
Just a point of information, I think all of that is in the proposal?
Much of it is. The budget is pretty straightforward. $579,000 will be directly for rent assistance, so that is passed through to landlords. It could be for a security deposit as well as rent, but it's, it's all passed through to the landlords. There's $150,000 for program staff, which is approximately two FTEs. The reason it's framed in that way is different phases of this work will require different staffing expertise. First thing, for example, is likely to be housing locators. The later parts of the program, which we expect to run for approximately two years, will be more case management and other supports like that. There is $81,000 for program administration, and that covers the costs for processing rent payments and all the various, and quite rigorous reporting and tracking of all expenses. One of the reasons we have historically had our rent assistance programs handled by our nonprofit partners is it prevents us from having to make sure that everybody who gets assistance is either a citizen of the United States or has legal status. We have done this with a number, actually, virtually all of our direct rent assistance programs for that reason. Another benefit is when you have all of this, everyone will be in the continuum of care HMIS system, which prevents us from, is a very good check and balance to prevent duplication of benefits, which is another thing the federal government is very much interested in making sure we don't do. And Connections for the Homeless has the experience handling these direct payments to landlords and the capacity to pay the landlords and then be reimbursed after the fact. Those are some of the reasons as well. They have been doing our TIBR program for, wow, I think since about 2015. And before that, Connections was the primary organization that handled homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing, which was the 800 and approximately $800,000 that the city got after the mortgage foreclosure crisis, which actually started off many of these rent assistance programs.
Thank you. So I guess I'm hearing, it sounds like hundreds and hundreds, over 300,000 just to, you know, for staffing and overhead. And it does beg the question, you know, general assistance has in the past paid rental. Seems to me we should be looking at the possibility of hiring then to bolster our programs so that we can have a more effective general assistance program. Again, there's, you know, it removes the layers of oversight. It's right here. We, we know, we can ensure who we're giving the rental assistance to much better than, than allocating it to a third party. So I'm not, so I, again, I'm sorry that we can't have a committee look at this in a more careful way to see if that wouldn't be a better approach, a better way to serve our residents. Can we, so do we have a guarantee that this will be for Evanston residents? Is that guaranteed with this proposal?
Yes. All, all ESG and Home TIBR are also restricted to Evanston residents.
Okay. And will it be allocated based on the centralized waiting list? Or can we, say, for example, prioritize the residents from Wesley with this--
Just a point of information, this is 100% funded by the City of Evanston. I'm not sure we've ever, with projects 100% funded by the City of Evanston, allocated those resources to non-Evanston residents. I don't think that's happened before. It's only when it's money combined from federal government, state, et cetera, do all those other lists come, come into play. So I just don't think we need to overcomplicate this.
Right. We're very careful, and that's one of the things we have periodically gotten into arguments with the continuum of care about.
Okay. I guess there's just, there's this centralized list. I, you know, I just, I don't think any of us really understand how this money will be allocated and what, how it will be evaluated, who gets it. So I just, I guess it would be helpful to know some of that, but. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Revelle, followed by Harris.
Well, excuse me. The memo seconds a lot of what Sarah was talking about, about the experience Connections has in making monthly rent payments to housing providers. Connection staff includes case management, social workers with experience, helping unstably housed and homeless individuals and families assess their needs, locate and secure leases for appropriate housing units, et cetera, et cetera. So I think by going with the management by Connections for this program, we're taking advantage of their depth of experience in handling this exact kind of program. So I, I fully support it going through, going as proposed here.
Councilmember Harris?
I do like Councilmember Kelly, just always like when we can keep things in-home and use our money effectively internally and have more jurisdiction over it. I would say we're not taking advantage if we're paying $150,000 for somebody to do the work. So we'd be paying for what we're getting. So this is from the participatory, I have to say that word slower, I can't say that fast, participatory budgeting. And did we talk to that group? Is this how they saw that money being used? That was one of the questions I had early in the game. Pardon me?
I'm sorry. I missed what your question was that--
So this was part of participatory budgeting?
Yes. Yes.
And was this how they exactly saw the money being used?
They actually did talk about it was fine to use a nonprofit partner. They just wanted to make sure that they were going to make sure that the apartments that people were in were maintained. That's not been a problem with any of our rental assistance programs. The program actually wanted us to find landlords and do this almost, it sounded almost like what I would call project-based assistance, where they make an agreement with a landlord for a, to take a master lease or something like that, and then put people in the housing. That's almost the way it was phrased. I had talked at some length with people about that. And what we really do is, most of our work with our rent assistance programs is with smaller local landlords. So I think what, what their goal was to have the benefit of helping our local landlords as well. So that's how we're addressing that. It's very difficult and not always in the best interests of the tenant to do master leases. It's a totally different process that gets used on some occasions, but we really want the tenants to have leases in their own names so that they begin to establish a history, a credit history, and that they've been good tenants with the assistance. So there are a few things like that that don't exactly mesh with what was in their description.
And we follow back up with them to, to make sure. So what, what my concern is, it's a lot. We're helping, and this, again, if I'm clear, had no, excuse me, no financial, so anybody could have requested this assistance, correct, within Evanston?
Their description is people of greatest need, and specifically people who are at risk of being pushed out of Evanston because they couldn't afford it.
Okay. So that's homeowners as well, people who own homes that can't necessarily afford anymore, not just renters? Or is this just renters?
Well, it's rent assistance only.
Okay.
That's what, that was what they stated. It was rent assistance only.
Okay. So do we have anything in place for people that own homes that are losing homes? Because we have people of color doing that just as well.
We, the city, do not have anything at this time. I believe there is still some funding available through, through the Illinois Housing Development Authority. I can check on that for you, and we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am fully prepared to move this forward. I think Connections is the right partner for this. I want to make an observation. Affordable housing is one of the goals and priorities of the City Council. What we're talking about tonight has come through the participatory budgeting process. I, and I think the majority of council, if not all of us, have committed to, you know, upholding the will of that process, and so I'm committed to moving this forward. But I just want to point out that helping folks with rent assistance is, is not creating more affordable housing that is the ultimate solution to the problem that we have. Like, we are not, we're helping people fish. We're giving people some fish rather than teaching them to fish or stocking the lake. And eventually, we need to take the conversation in that direction. And then, one question, which you have answered to my satisfaction previously, but just for, for the record in public, what measures are in place to make sure that rents don't all of a sudden start going up in town because all of a sudden this money is now available?
Well, it seems like a lot of money to us, but in the grand scheme of things, in the rental market, it is not going to have that great an impact. We base our rents on what are known as the small area fair market rents, which is the established method for providing rent assistance. The Section 8 program uses that, for example. Are there times that we may have to go above those rents because we can't get units? We may have to, because there's a really tight rental market right now. So I, we can't necessarily say we only go to that. But we are looking for, also looking for units that people will hopefully be able to then take over their own rent at some point. And so we're not going to be going, putting people into the, you know, luxury units. What we look for is what HUD calls standard units. And the fair, the small area fair market rents are supposed to be affordable to people at approximately 40% of the area median, which never really quite works out in Evanston because we're a higher-cost housing market, so. But I hope that's helpful.
At this time, pardon me, at this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to second cracks, beginning with Councilmember Harris with three and a half minutes left.
So, excuse me, I don't know, being up here so long. Is there a limit? I don't remember seeing if there was a limit to how much we'd pay a month for a family. I don't remember seeing that.
There isn't a limit that's the same for each family. What we do is, what Connections does, is they work with the, each household and try to ascertain what they can afford to pay, and the subsidy takes up the rest. If they can, if they can increase their income, then that shifts over time. That happens a lot in the TIBR program, for example. We help people get better employment and things like that. In some cases, frankly, Connections will be potentially working with people who are not going to be able to increase their income. So what they do then is the, after getting them in housing, they're already starting to look for ways to get them into programs that will provide long-term affordable housing. Seniors, for example. Get them on the lists for all the senior buildings and that sort of--
And we know that they aren't already in that system, because most times, people are already in the system. So we--
Actually, we find a lot of people who are not.
Okay. I like that data.
It's scary, but there are a lot of people who are not. We also find people who have not gotten other benefits, and--
You say "we," who's "we"?
We, all of us, when we're working on this. Anyone providing assistance. One of the things that gets looked at for seniors, for example, is the senior benefits analysis to make sure people are getting other things that aren't just housing, because there are frequently people who are not getting other entitlements to which they're eligible, for which they're--
So I want to be clear why I'm asking this. I get emails all the time for people that are about to lose their homes, who have established residency, who have been here 30 years and now can't pay taxes, have second mortgages, and we're making compensations for renters who coming, who have the potential to come and go and don't have the longevity. And I'm getting those emails. I'm also feeling that crunch myself at times where I am working very hard, not off the cities, where we get paid for other people, because I wouldn't be able to live anywhere with that, right? But I work very hard to make sure my mortgage is paid, my bills are paid, but I'm always looking at the possibility of losing, not losing my building, but what does that mean? What do I have to give up in place of that? So I'm hearing that a lot from the middle class that are now being pushed down and not able to afford a home, who will then be pushed into a program like this because they can't keep their property anymore. And I have a problem with that. And I understand we're trying to be fair and equitable, but we need to make sure that that is across the board for our homeowners, not just our renters, that if we're keeping people here, we're keeping people here who are invested and paying taxes to do that. So I want to be really clear about why you're feeling some pushback from me, because I'm getting those emails on a regular basis. And I need to advocate for that, because I fall into that. The middle class is no longer going to be middle class.
And Councilmember Harris, that is one of the things that we are hopefully going to be looking at and evaluating and bringing forward ways to address that need in the strategic housing plan, that we're working on to figure out how we're going to use things like the money from Northwestern University, which also does not come with the kind of restrictions that some of our HUD money does. It's very difficult right now with our HUD sources to do much for homeownership.
Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to that last point that I just want to remind us that this proposal came from the community. So this wasn't a proposal that was developed by council. So although I understand the concern, and we can work together on that, I'm already working as part of our here-to-state committee that I developed, as well as working with Uri and Sarah and their team on the Strategic Affordable Housing Plan. We're working on that. This proposal to remind everybody that's, that's observing the meeting was developed through our particip-- I know, see, you got me. Through the participatory budgeting process. And it was the community that said, we allow them to determine how-- budgeting process. And it was the community that said, we allowed them to determine how we were to use $3 million of federal funds. Most understand this, but some may not. And not only did we allow them ultimately to vote on the winning proposals, but we allowed them to develop the proposals. And this was one of the proposals that the community developed with, I would say, without any real feedback from council members and some coordination from staff. There was a feasibility period in the process where, once the proposals, once they arrived at a first draft, they then met with Sarah for this particular proposal, but whoever the relevant staff person was to kind of fine-tune it. But I just wanted to remind us all how we got here. And that's all, Chair. Thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back for a second opportunity to Councilmember Reed with three minutes and 40 seconds left. Councilmember Reed, was your light on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bis. I just wanted to highlight, well, one thing, respond to Councilmember Harris, as one half of the renters on the council. I don't want to put out into the community that renters are somehow, you know, less a part of the community than folks who don't rent. And renters pay property taxes as well through our rent payments. But my main point is, I didn't hear the answer, I don't think, to Councilmember Harris's question about whether or not this particular proposal went, was, so there are delegate groups, there are budget delegates and groups that were formed that ushered the various proposals through the process. Was this proposal presented to that group, the group that formed this?
Not in its final form. Much of what is in it, however, was discussed with them in the development. We talked about what the ways of implementing it were. And much of the language in it is picked up from their actual application. And we went through three different vettings and three different discussions on what changes and things that they were looking for. So I believe we have stayed as true as we can to that, given the realities of how you can rent housing.
Okay. I do think we should make it a, you know, move it forward. It should definitely, we should be checking in with the groups. We should be checking in with the groups to make sure that they have supported the particular proposals that we end up with.
There's still no one asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with 55 seconds left.
Thank you. So just as a point of clarification information, so this is a large sum of money, $800,000. Do, like, when will we RFP for something like that? I mean, I know there, I'm just, just to understand, like, between, like, thresholds and connections and maybe REBA, or I don't know, how does that work? Like, how do we just, do we not RFP for something like this?
We often don't RFP for programs like this, and that is actually approved by the federal government. Even though Treasury doesn't have a lot of regulations, they are, when they talk about sub-recipient agreements, which this is, it's a standard method of handling funding that's given to, or passed through to nonprofits to provide services on the recipient's, the funding recipient's behalf. One of the things is frequently, you don't RFP these things all the time, because agencies have certain capacities and abilities and certain types of things, and they get that from continuing, doing it over a long term and getting good at it. It's not something that you can easily have somebody pick up and take on this kind of a program. It is not simple. And the administrative portions, let alone the case management and all of the actual direct work with the clients that we are, they are assisting, the administrative stuff is really quite rigorous, and we have to have all kinds of documentation of everything. We have to have copies of the leases, we have to have copies of how we qualified people, we have to have copies of all the payments that were shipped off to people. It's a pretty onerous job. It's not something that you take somebody and say, hey, want to try this?
Thank you. So just so I understand, so we didn't reach out to any other agency like Thresholds, correct?
Not in this case. We seek to work with agencies that are in Evanston ideally, but also ones that we, in a case like this, that have a history of doing this kind of program successfully.
Okay. So, I mean, I do understand that, well, at least historically, Thresholds has been here as well. That's why I'm just asking. And then, again, in REBA, I mean, it is a large chunk of that money that is going to the cost of staffing. So I would like to see us bolstering our general assistance program, hiring people. I would like to see us using that money to, again, it's for us also, that we're in closer contact, we're in closer connection with the people that we're giving it to. We have a closer, tighter tie with our community as opposed to giving it to a third party. So I guess both those questions, both, you know, in terms of sort of an RFP or vetting other organizations, but also really heavily considering hiring staff with that, it's over $200,000 that we'll be paying for programming and staffing, kind of overhead. So I don't doubt that, you know, Connections will do a good job, but it is, again, I think as a city, we are more in touch with our community if we are delivering this service ourself. Thank you. That's all.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so we go back to Councilmember Harris with a minute and a half left.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Reed, for pointing out renters and homeowners. So if anybody felt like it was either/or, it's and, that both. And we're not dealing with homeowners, so that is why I'm bringing that up. So I don't want anybody to feel less than it is an and. Two things can be true at the same time, and they are in this case. So let's be clear about that. You hear what you want to hear and respond accordingly. So we now are dealing with the situation, an emergency situation on Wesley Avenue. Are they going to be prioritized? And again, I was very specific when I felt, when I mentioned that we should be talking to the participatory budgeting group. If we change what they've asked for, we're not necessarily asking for permission, but being clear that, did they want a third agency doing that? We want all of our dollars going to help people be honed. So I just feel like we should go back to them. But will the Wesley residents, because we have a predicament that we did not create, but have to deal with, are they going to be prioritized?
They are certainly eligible. I don't know to say that they are prioritized, but they're an important group that can be helped. There are also other of our grant programs that, some of them are already being assessed for. For example, the Home TIBR program, people who have children in the schools fit that program. What I'm trying to do right now is, I want to pull up the-
So we currently have a relationship with the Wesley residents, correct?
Yes, we actually, our staff, Maurice Wilkerson and Jeremy McCray, and our victims' advocates have been working with some of the houses. Connections will work with them, and they will not just suddenly be transferred over to Connections. All the Connections works very well with our staff on people that they already have connections with. And there are cases where somebody has case management at another agency. I don't know that that will happen in this case, but where Connections provides rent assistance, but they don't do the case management themselves. If those relationships on other programs are established with people already, because the established relationships really matter. One of the things I wanted to read you is that there was a part in here that specifically talked about people who were, as I already said, being pushed out of Evanston because of lack of affordability. So some of the Wesley people, especially some of the seniors, are not going to be able to easily pay current rents. Their rents were kept very, very low by HOD, by Evanston Housing Coalition. And I am quite certain that Evanston Housing Co-, well, I know Evanston Housing Coalition did not evict or do anything to people who were not able to pay or catch up in all cases. What I don't think they got during the COVID period is I don't think they got help getting rent assistance to pay their arrears, which may have been partly because of the lack of connections with the capacity, loss of capacity, that Evanston Housing Coalition suffered.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Haddad-Gariz?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye, with reservation, but aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye, apologies. Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the agreement is approved. This brings us to item P1. Councilmember Revel, do you want to make a motion here?
Sure. Just a moment. Okay. I move approval of ordinance 19-0-24, approving a text amendment amending regulations for efficiency homes.
So I think there was some noise, so people didn't all hear. And are you doing P1 and P2 simultaneously?
No.
No, okay. So that was a motion on P2 alone?
P1.
Oh, sorry, P1 alone, great.
Right.
Councilmember Revel moves approval of ordinance 19-0-24. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So last time, I tried to amend this at PND, but somehow it got, I don't know what happened. So I want to make sure I get in, there's two things, two things I'd like to amend. One, I feel very strongly this should be a PD and go back to the Land Use Commission, fulfilling all the requirements of an application for a PD, so that this can be done successfully and with due diligence.
I think that's P2.
Okay. Well, I just want to state this so that I don't get, you know, so this doesn't get washed over again. And the other one I'd like to recommend is that directing staff to go back to engage with SEPA to bring back a proposal to invest in two of these efficiency homes as land trust properties that would be affordable in perpetuity. So let me know where each of those goes. So this, I just don't want to find out at the end again that I missed the opportunity to appropriately amend. So right now, it looks like we're discussing amending this as a special use text amendment. I would like to move that this be a planned development, that this go back as a planned development and be brought back to the Land Use Commission with, as an application for planned development.
But, so this is just amending the code to say that if there's going to be more than one efficiency home on a property, it's handled as a special use and not as a planned development?
Exactly. That's why I'm recommending that I would-
But I think, Councilmember Kelly, you're really, aren't you mostly really focusing on the proposed project itself?
No, I don't, I don't have objections to a pocket community. I've said that many times. I have objections to the manner by which we are evaluating and assessing it and moving it forward. This should be a planned development, not a special use.
So I think you're asking for help on what motion to make, is that right, Councilmember?
Well, I believe right now, what we're doing is, currently, we have a, just for the public too, we have City Code that says that you can have one efficiency house per lot, and we have agreed to amend that to allow for more, but only upon approval as a special use, is what the Land Use Commission unanimously said, that this should be only approved as a planned development. The developer would like us to approve it as a special use, despite, you know, unanimous recommendation by the Land Use Commission. I concur with the Land Use Commission, and I would like to move that this be considered as a planned development, which means that Mr., I'm sorry, I forgot his name, Wallach, go back and apply as a planned development and bring this back to Land Use Commission as a planned development.
So I guess-
Point of order.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, point of order, both, one, that is out of order because it's the wrong item, and then two, even when we do get to P2, it's out of order, because the staff said, we can't make a motion to send something back as a planned development. The option is to just vote no. And so that, if that's the goal on both those, just vote no and try to convince other people to vote no.
I disagree, though. The Land Use Commission-
If you want to make an amendment to ordinance 19-0-24, item P1, that's, that's fine. Just say what it is.
I thought I did. I'll try again. So I would like to recommend that we expand the number of units of efficiency homes that can be approved per lot as a planned development. And so currently, it says one, so now we're allowing this to be expanded beyond one, but only if approved via a planned development, not a special use.
Okay, so if that's, if you're able to put that in, right, if you got a second to put that in writing, then we can vote on that amendment.
It's what the Land Use Commission recommended, but okay, I will copy and paste that from the Land Use recommendation.
I think in the meantime, as we're holding, if we're waiting on the motion, it just makes sense to see if there's a second.
You raise a good point. So to the extent that folks understand exactly what's being proposed, is there a second to this motion? If someone says, yes, I understand, and yes, I second it, then that simplifies our situation. Otherwise, we have to wait, I think. I don't see a second for this motion. Is there anyone who's waiting more clarification before deciding whether to second the motion? Okay, I think we need to see this motion in writing, Councilmember, before we know if there's a second. Oh, and in the future, could everybody make sure when they email motions and amendments and stuff, please include the clerk on the email, since I'm doing my best to forward everything, but no one's ever given me an award for being a great forwarder of emails. Although, you know, someone wants to. I'll get a tux.
Another thing that council members could do would be to prepare these emails in advance and hit send at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I would recommend about that is, not only does it save time, but also it usually improves the clarity of the emails. I mean, I've been, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to strike a balance between demanding enough clarity that there's no chance of ambiguity on the one hand, but on the other hand, not being too uptight. But there's value in being super uptight when we're talking about votes that are potentially final action on technical issues. And so to the extent that the amendments can be phrased with absolute clarity, like, strike these words, and add these words in this spot, I think that really would be the proper way of handling this. And of course, Councilmember Newsma, you're right, that's a lot easier to do if you've prepared it in advance. prepared it in advance.
Okay. And I apologize, it's just, it's a lot of amendments tonight. I did have the other ones prepared. So this is the one that the Land Use Commission unanimously recommended. I didn't copy and paste their words, these are my, my words, but it's the exact recommendation from the Land Use Commission.
So just, what the email says is I would like to amend P1 to allow more than one efficiency house per lot, and if it's more than one per lot, it must be approved as a plan development to go through the Land Use Commission as such with recommendations for a plan development.
Thank you. And again, this is going to impact our entire residential-
So let's, is there a second to this motion? So the motion fails for lack of a second. Councilmember Kelly, you still have the floor if you want it.
No, I'm sorry. I, I see we're only benefiting, it looks like everyone's primarily interested in looking out for the developer. And I'm sorry, because for an extra month or two months, if you're, you're considering and you're, you're concerned about affordability, this should be primarily, these should be the homes that we're most, we most care about ensuring that development is done right. And that's, that's the whole point of a plan development. If you've, any of you have studied the list of what's required in application, you will see that it's much more stringent, there's much more oversight as to what is going to be involved, including plat of surveys, drainage, landscaping, community benefits, so much more. So I'm really sorry that for our first pocket community, this, you know, that, that you all aren't willing to wait two months to allow this to go through due process. Due diligence.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll? Again, this is only on ordinance 19-0-24. There was not a motion made for the two at once.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 19-0-24 has passed. Now on item P2, Councilmember Revel.
I move approval of ordinance 18-0-24 approving a special use with zoning relief for an efficiency home development at 191517 Grant Street in the R3 two-family residential district.
Second. Councilmember Revel moves approval of ordinance 18-0-24. Councilmember Hatakakis, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Okay, so I would like to amend this, it's coming right away, to direct staff to engage with SEPA, to come back with a proposal for two community land trust houses, efficiency houses. The way we preliminarily discussed it, these would be sold at 150 instead of, I think that Mr. Wallach was proposing 250,000 for the affordable house, which is still seems very high for 600 square feet, that we would purchase them, the details would be worked out, but we would purchase them at the, what he was proposing as the affordable rate, I believe at 250, to be sold at 150, and these would remain affordable in perpetuity. That's a motion.
Is there a second for that motion? The motion fails for lack of a second. Councilmember Revel followed by Burns.
No, I'm sorry, I was trying to get to my mute button. I, I will second that.
All right, sorry. The motion is seconded by Councilmember Reed, and so in that case, we need to see the motion in writing.
One minute.
And while we're waiting, Councilmember Revel, are you also in line to speak on this amendment or the underlying?
No, I have, I have another amendment.
Sorry, Councilmember Reed, what's that? Councilmember Reed?
My apologies.
Okay.
Mike, go ahead. Well, in the meantime, is the, is the applicant still in the room?
Yes, he is.
Okay. If I can ask a quick question?
Well, no, there's, there's a whole, there's a whole line, Councilmember. So if you, if we want to get, if we want to get the line moving, you're at the back of it, I'm afraid.
All right.
Councilmember Kelly, how close are you to having this prepared for us? Okay, hearing no response, so then we're going to skip over you, Councilmember Revel, right? You're going to wait to speak to the underlying thing? All right, so Councilmember Burns followed by Reed.
Yeah, I consider making a substitute motion. I, I can make a motion after this when it fails, if that's a cleaner way to do it. But I plan not to support this. I don't, I think we had a discussion with the applicant, and they are supportive, I want to say, of contributing the, the affordable housing efficiency unit, if that's what we're calling it, it's already a part of the proposal, contributing that to a land trust, which I think is a better way to do this, because it's already been worked into the plan, at least the, the price of, the cost of it. I don't think at this point the applicant will be able to, at the end of the process, take a $200,000 hit or whatever is being proposed. That's just not how it works. But I think it's a good idea to contribute, again, the existing affordable inclusionary housing unit into a land trust. So that will, that's the motion I will make once we dispatch of this one, assuming it fails.
We, we do have a moment, a motion from Councilmember Kelly, which I guess sort of illustrates the point I was making earlier, and, you know, maybe out of an ill-considered overabundance of generosity, I'll let it go tonight and just be clear with all of my colleagues up here in the future, starting on March 25th, or any special meetings that may occur, starting tomorrow. We, I, I'm going to really require the writing, the motions in writing to be fully clear so that a robot could take them and produce the final draft without needing to make any judgment calls. Because what happens when that criterion is not met is there's a vote, and the next day, our legal department is struggling to figure out what exactly they're supposed to even send me for my signature. And our clear, has the same issue with the minutes. So I know you guys got annoyed when I demand this, but I'm going to just, seeing what's in front of me here, I'm going to crank up the demand for clarity and precision in any amendments that are made during council meetings. I think in line at this time is Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, thank you. So to clarify my understanding of Councilmember Kelly's motion, and I, I think it's, it's quite different from what Councilmember Burns just alluded to. It is that the, I wouldn't ask the developer to take a $200,000 loss. I think what the motion is, as I understand it, is that the city would buy the unit at market rate, and we would take the loss to make it affordable, as we have done with properties and, and others. So that's, that, that's my understanding of the motion. And so with that, I, I do think that, and so that's why I asked if the applicant is here, I don't think he'd have any issue with essentially having guaranteed that two of his units, one, you know, the one that's already affordable, well, we'll buy that at the affordable rate, but the one that isn't, we'll buy it at market rate, and that would allow us to put two, two housing units into a land trust. And I would suppose that the developer would be maybe even ecstatic to have two of his units essentially already sold before they even built.
First of all, without question, thank you, Councilman Reed. We came-
If you could introduce yourself for the record.
I'm sorry, David Wallach, the, on behalf of Blue Paint Development. We came to this body without asking for anything. So we're committed to doing whatever we can to make it a better project, and to the extent that a second goes into the land trust, we would certainly welcome that, the first one at the inclusionary housing, as we worked out with the city, and the second at market rate, we certainly welcome that.
Councilmember Reed, are you done for now?
Yeah, so I'll just close with, I would encourage us, I mean, this is a great opportunity to provide affordability in perpetuity here in, in, in the, in Councilmember Revel's ward. So to me, it makes perfect sense. I mean, the, the thing we have to think about is, you know, essentially, we have the money. We, you know, it's really just a values discussion of, do we want to commit, you know, whatever the dollar amount there is to purchasing? And maybe it's not a, you know, a guaranteed, it's, you know, we have the option to do this, whatever the case may be. But I do think it's wise for us to keep this option here and support, you know, this motion or some version of it, to make sure that we can get some affordability in perpetuity up on the north side of town.
Just before we go on, on this point, just reading, so reading the amendment, I'm not, I'm not doing this socratically, I'm doing this sincerely. Like, does this amendment commit us at this time to purchase homes? Does it commit us to have a conversation with SEPA to check it out?
That's the same way we did with JLL in principle, but then we just rolled over with their preliminary results. The idea is to go out, discuss-
Councilmember Kelly, I'm not, my question is about what the text of the amendment means. I'm not arguing with you. I just, this, if this is, this is final action. So this amendment passes, and then the thing passes, there's going to be a law tomorrow. What does that law say?
It says we're not done yet until they come back, till staff comes back with a proposal to, after engaging with SEPA. And I would also say, like, let's try negotiating. Maybe, maybe Mr. Wallach would consider selling us two houses at what he would consider the affordable rate of, I think it was 250,000, as opposed to one at 300 and whatever, 80,000. Let's try negotiating too. Let's staff go out and work with, engage with SEPA and negotiate with Mr. Wallach and see if-
Okay, so I, I appreciate the response. I, my question has been answered, I think to the extent it's going to be, we'll continue with people who've raised their hands. Next is Councilmember Hatakakis.
So I will just say this, I think we are not at our best when we are making major changes right at the last minute. If, I would gladly sponsor a referral to look into what us as a council can do with SEPA and land trusts, and start a formal discussion around that. I think that should go through Housing and Community Development. I am uncomfortable tying that to this project right now at this time, but I think that's something in the future, like, I think we should be doing more of. So you can put me down as a co-referrer for that.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with four and a half minutes left.
Councilmember Hatakakis, I'm not sure what exactly you're uncomfortable about. This is about providing affordability to our residents, particularly in parts of town where we don't have a lot of it. So if we have our staff go out and negotiate and come back with two houses that will remain forever affordable, I think it's worth a little discomfort, quite frankly.
There's still nobody asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Burns with four minutes left.
So Councilmember Reed, I hope that was what Councilmember Kelly said a moment ago was, was informative. My understanding again is whether it's outlined, and this, and this motion is a little strange to me, because it's calling for an amendment, but then it's also calling for like some type of discussion, which doesn't seem to go together to me. Which is why I don't even know if it's an amendment. I really just think you're saying we should hold this or table it or whatever, so that it could, so that this other issue can be considered, which is not an amendment, you know, it's just make a motion saying that. But again, what you said a moment ago is, is the idea that the developer would sell us one, one, two of the units at a discount, at the same price of the inclusionary housing unit. And what I'm saying is, I, I highly doubt that the developer is prepared to do that today, knowing how tight these margins are for many developers. And so what we can get done today is contributing the existing inclusionary housing unit into a land trust, which I asked Sarah if she could work on language for me, so I can make a motion if this fails. And the other thing on, on Councilmember Hatakakis, on your point, we've already been working with Rob Anthony to develop a proposal. We are waiting for the funding with Northwestern to get approved, which it was, and so we'll be bringing that to, and so we should, let's make a referral, once it's, we're close to being ready on that, and then, but the proposal will be ready for ACDC to consider. And that's all, Chair, thank you.
Still no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember- oh, sorry, Ms. Flax, Director Flax, did you want to speak?
I did want to point out that this development is covered by the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, and the developer has agreed to sell one unit at a price that is affordable to a household at the area median, which is the requirement of our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. I think that we will find that if we expect the developer to sell two houses at a much lower rate, that that won't pencil. And it's also not following our own ordinance. But Rob Anthony is, I've already talked with Rob Anthony about putting, talking to developers when they have for sale houses, and having them work with the developer, you don't necessarily just put it in the land trust, you, they would help find a buyer, and the buyer would agree to that the house would go into the land trust. So the house would go into the land trust, and Mr. Wallach has agreed to that, and Rob Anthony has agreed in principle, and in fact, has emailed me already today about this. I don't think that it's at all a difficult thing to add a simple line to the ordinance that says the inclusionary affordable unit will be entered into the Community Partners for Affordable Housing land trust, to be maintained affordable in perpetuity. But it won't be bought by the city or anyone, it will be sold to an income-eligible person by SEPA, the same way they handle the, you know, ETHs homes. We're, we're creating an extra step that really just complicates it. I hope that's helpful.
Extremely. There's still no one requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed for a second crack with two minutes and 50 seconds left.
All right, I, I would just encourage us to, at this point, I do think we are bogging this down. The, the developer has clearly indicated that he's willing, he's essentially willing to work with the city. I think there's plenty of opportunity between now and when the units are constructed for us to negotiate a deal where the city would purchase the units. I don't think it has to be in the ordinance. So I, you know, I think we can just continue on.
At this point, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so we go back for a third crack to Councilmember Kelly with four minutes and 10 seconds left.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. One's, Ms. Flax, if you could tell us, please, what is the area median income for one person for one of these houses? And then my other question is, well, I think, you know, of course, the developer is offering, you know, what, well, offering, it's one house as per our IHO, but certainly it's worth talking to see if he'd be interested, or he would consider negotiating the sale of two homes for a lesser price than the market price. I'm not saying he will, but I think we should learn to negotiate on behalf of our residents in that way. So, Ms. Flax, what is the, the area median income for this house for, say, one person or two people, or one or two?
I would have to look that up. The area median income changes by household size, so I can't give you that without looking it up. I can do that if you give me-
For one? Okay, thank you. For one person and for two? Because it's a two-bedroom, right?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So for one person and two? And also, I think it's important when we do, you know, land trust, it's- it's nice to have two, not an isolated single unit. Move forward with land trusts. And I'm glad other folks on the council are also embracing this idea of creating more land trust properties.
We're just waiting for Director Flax to answer the question about the area median income for households of one and two.
These are the current incomes, so they are still the 2023 incomes because HUD hasn't gotten the 2024 ones out. They usually get those out in April. The income, maximum income for a household at, oh, this is great. They don't, they have 120 and they have 80. So 50% is 38, 650, so that times two is the area median for one. I can't do math in my head, I can get my calculator.
I'm just trying to imagine living a life where I'm standing on a microphone and saying, get a calculator, and then like a person scurries up behind me holding one. It's a prop to Liz Williams.
Oh, this is great. The Chicago chart has it multiplied out. 77,300 for a household of one, for a household of two, it's 88,300. Now, by the time the house is actually being sold, it will probably be the 2024, possibly 2025, which are likely to go up.
Okay, so thank you, probably closer to $90,000?
I'm not going to try to project that. We actually did have some periods where they went down. It was right after the mortgage foreclosure crisis.
Is this, and I know when I looked at the census, it's different for our, for our non-white population. Do you have the average median income, the area median income for non-white in Evanston?
I don't, and we can't base the sale price or the property price on that because that's not in our ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think councilmember Kelly's heart is in the right place here. It would be great to have some of these tiny homes affordable in perpetuity. SEPA allows us a mechanism to do that. So councilmember Kelly is on the right track here. Honestly, I can't really follow what she's proposing in terms of this amendment, so I'm going to oppose this amendment. From what I'm picking up here from Director Flax and councilmember Burns, it sounds like there might be an amendment that makes sense that we could make that would accomplish most, if not all, of what councilmember Kelly is trying to get done. I'm going to leave it at that, thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so we go back for a third opportunity to councilmember Burns with two minutes, 10 seconds left.
I just wanted to clarify that it's not embracing, it's not embracing land trust homes. This council literally voted on one on Holland. We purchased a single-family home on Holland not too long ago and we contributed to a land trust program. So as to control the narrative around these issues, we're not just embracing it. We've taken action as recent as a few months ago. That's all, Chair, thank you.
At this time, there is no further request, oh, gosh. So at this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first, second, or third time, so we go back to councilmember Kelly with two and a half minutes left.
So I guess what I'm understanding, councilmember Burns, is that this should be held then. I would move to hold this in order for staff to engage with SEPA and come back with a proposal.
That's not an order at this time. There's a motion of an amendment on the table. Can a hold motion supersede an amendment?
Yes.
I'm getting two opposing answers.
A motion to hold supersedes anything, or just about.
Councilmember Kelly moves to hold this item, is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second. Councilmember Kelly?
Okay, so I was moving to hold it because it appears that that is the way to move forward with engaging with SEPA to come back for, to bring this back with a proposal to purchase two homes in the form of a community land trust to keep them affordable in perpetuity. So that was what I understood from the discussion on the dais, that this should be held over for that purpose. So I guess as it revert back then to my amendment, which apparently was unclear?
Yes, the next thing that happens when you're relinquished the floor will be that I'll call for a vote on the amendment.
Okay.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the role? This is again on the amendment that councilmember Kelly emailed to us at 10:09 PM.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
No.
Councilmember when? Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Saffordin?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
You forgot one.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
With one voting in favor and eight voting against, the motion fails and the ordinance is not amended. Councilmember Revel?
I have a different type of amendment. I move to amend ordinance 18-0-24 to add the following condition. Prior to building permit issuance, the applicant shall obtain a completion bond that lists the city as an obligee to ensure the implementation of the proposed development plan. The bond shall be held with the city until the final certificate of occupancy is issued. And I'm sending this as we speak.
As the amendment travels through the information superhighway, is there a second? Councilmember Revel moves to amend ordinance 18-0-24 as just described, which has not yet arrived in my inbox and which I candidly am not capable of repeating off the top of my head. Councilmember Wen seconds, the motion is now arrived and it adds a condition which reads as follows. Prior to building permit issuance, the applicant shall obtain a completion bond that lists the city as an obligee to ensure the implementation of the proposed development plan. The bond shall be held with the city until the final certificate of occupancy is issued. And just to be an equal opportunity pedant, I would just say that in the future, if you could say where in the ordinance such a thing goes, that would be helpful, but obviously, the text is complete and so no additions are needed. Is there any discussion on this amendment?
I will just suggest that there have been concerns among neighbors about about the ability to get the project completed. And so this is why I'm proposing this bond.
Councilmember Kelly, your hand is still up. Is it up again or still, and if again, to speak on this amendment or more generally?
Nope, just forgot to take it down, sorry.
Got it. Okay, seeing no discussion, will the clerk please take the role on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry, my bad. At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so we go back to councilmember Reed with a minute 45 left.
Yeah, this very quick question for the developer. Does our, actually, I'll start with my colleague. Have you discussed this with the developer? With the applicant?
No, I haven't.
If I just may ask the applicant, what the impact of this may be, this amendment?
I'm a lawyer as well, so I get my lawyer hat on as my developer hat. And I would say that it's an odd request. Generally, you do a completion bond when you're doing something for the city. So you're building a building for the city and they ask you for a completion bond. That's pretty standard in public-private things. In this case, it's strictly a private project. So it's a little bit strange contextually on it. As to the financial concerns, again, we really appreciate the well-being requests from members of the community. We wouldn't be starting the project if we didn't finish. It's being financed completely separately from anything that's going on with our manufacturing company. So I felt that's been a red herring since the beginning. Getting to the actual part, a bond's generally about 4% of the overall project cost to issue the bond. So it's a tax on us for no other purpose. So that's the cost of a bond. You know, could we get a bond? Sure, is that a precedent you want to set? I'll leave it up, you know, to you. I think it's a bit unfair. I have felt that the aspersions cast by the community group for a developer, I'm not saying that we're not without issue, but I don't think you'll find a developer that goes without issue in our, you know, ordinary car stuff. So I think it's a bit odd, but, you know, I'll leave it at that and then let you all discuss it.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, you know, I understand where councilmember Revel is coming from with this request. I do think, you know, if the proposal was, you know, if you was building a spire and there's going to be a big hole left in the ground in the middle of the neighborhood, you know, I'd have more concern, but it's building, you know, however many single, you know, 12, 13, single-family efficiency homes. So I don't have, I don't know, yeah, I share the sentiment just shared with us that I don't know if that's appropriate for this deal, but certainly, obviously, it's the council's direction. I would encourage my colleagues to not support this. But I get where councilmember Revel is coming from. Thank you.
So there's two lights on, to the best of my ability to tell. One is councilmember Burns and one is councilmember Kelly. Are either one of you seeking to speak to this amendment? So then will the clerk please take the role on the amendment sent to us at 10:30 PM by councilmember Revel?
Councilmember Hadekakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 18-0-24 is so amended. Councilmember Revel, did you want to continue or no? Okay, so at this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first, second, or third time, so we go back to councilmember Burns with a minute 40 left.
Yeah, just wanted to make the amendment that I mentioned on P2. I sent it around revising P2 to mandate that the affordable housing unit included in the efficiency home project in 1915 to 1917 Grand Street be placed into the land trust managed by Community Partners for Affordable Housing, ensuring its affordability is preserved in perpetuity. And it's probably not perfect based on some information you provided after I sent it, but hopefully, I can squeeze this one in one last time.
I would say in light of what I've allowed so far tonight, you are on medium-thickness ice. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Burns moves to amend ordinance 18-0-24 to mandate that the affordable housing unit among the project being described be placed into the land trust managed by SEPA. Councilmember Hadekakis seconds. Is there any discussion of this amendment?
You do have quick comment. So also just want to be clear that while I, of course, support affordable housing projects, that I want to clarify statements I made earlier. So when I said that the margins are tight, there's a reason why we created Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. It's so that developers, when they're interested in developing in Evanston, they understand what's to come, right? And so they know what our requirements are in terms of affordability or other requirements. And so to, and they're basing that information that they get early on in the process to develop their pro forma. And so to throw all of this on them at the end, that's why I say, considering the margins are tight for developers of all types, especially of market-rate developers, believe it or not, especially in this particular environment where the cost of construction has gone way up, it's just not fair to throw that, to say, oh, at the end, now you have to not only come up with the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that you already figured out how to work within your plans, but an additional two. It's just, that's not how to do business. So I just wanted to clarify that, and that's all, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this land trust amendment? Oh, councilmember Kelly, so at this time, no one is asking to speak for a first, second, third, or fourth time, so we go to councilmember Kelly with a minute 45 left. No, that was wrong, that was totally wrong, that's on me and and it's 10:40 at night, so give me a little grace. Someone is requesting to speak for the first, second, third, or fourth time. No one is requesting to speak for the first time, but we go back to councilmember Newsma with four minutes and 15 seconds left. I apologize, councilmember.
That's good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is what Director Flax said was possible a few minutes ago. I just want to get that confirmation. And I don't know if you've seen it, I emailed it to you, so.
Director, if you want to make a comment, please come to the microphone.
I had sent very similar language to councilmember Burns and recommended that it be in Section 3 where the conditions, it would be the sixth condition.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly's hand is up. Did you want to speak to the amendment or to the underlying item?
To the amendment.
Okay, so at this time, no one's asking to speak for a first, second, third, or fourth times. We go back to councilmember Kelly appropriately this time with a minute 45 left.
So I would ask, it's not about how we're doing business and the cost. I'm asking that the city consider investing in two and negotiating so that we get the best price possible. It would be better to have two than one. I wouldn't say it's better to have 12 than one, but I would say it's better to have two, not one isolated, one isolated unit of affordable housing. So I'm simply asking that we come back with a proposal for one and two and if we can bring down the second house below the market price, of course, we should try and do that. If we can't, we can't, but we should then decide whether we want to invest in two or one. I would advocate for two, even if we're paying at a market rate for the second.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first, second, or third time, so we go back to a fourth opportunity for councilmember Reed with a minute 10 left.
Yeah, I just, I do think, obviously, two is better than one. Certainly, we have, I have one question. Is the affordable unit going to be constructed any differently than the other units?
They're shaking their head, no. Oh, sorry, Liz, I didn't know you were on your way.
That's correct, they will be identical.
Okay. Yeah, if, you know, obviously, I don't think that the private developer needs to, you know, take it for us, but I do think that take the hit for us. But I do think, again, whether it's in this ordinance or not, I think this is a good opportunity for the city to acquire another one of these efficiency homes and also put in the land trust. So I'm fine moving forward with this, I'm fine. Maybe if we could add two into there, one at the already affordable rate from the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and then one, you know, that we could negotiate and leave open to possibility if there's a friendly amendment that would be allowed to make that happen or if we just keep it, you know, in our back pockets and really pursue it when the time comes that we would try to acquire another one of these units to put into the land trust.
If I could, I don't think anything would prevent us from purchasing a house from the developer, but I honestly don't think that that is a necessary step. One of the other things that we could look to do is make sure that people can get down payment assistance and things like that, which can help also. Their down payment assistance is available through the Illinois Housing Development Authority, also through some other sources. There are things like that. There are things like that that can help reduce the cost to the buyer. One of the biggest things is you can have people who have income, but they don't have the down payment, and if you have a larger down payment, it gives you a better mortgage rate, and it can make it possible for people at lower income rates actually purchase a house. So I think that things like that could be investigated, working with SEPA and working with the developer. And again, somebody getting assistance like that with the agreement that the house would go into the land trust. I think all of those things can and should be explored.
No one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Revel with four minutes and fifteen seconds left.
Well, I just want to pick up on Sarah's, Director Flax's comments just now. I think that would be really great for us to do that. Assistance with the down payments would be a great, a great thing for us to explore.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the role? This is now on the amendment sent to us at 10:30 PM by Councilmember Burns.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Buon?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 18-0-24 is amended with the, with the land trust provision for the affordable unit. Now seeing no further discussion, the ordinance has been amended twice. The second and third amendments that were proposed were both passed. Will the clerk please take the role on the twice amended ordinance 18-0-24?
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Nope.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Buon?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordin?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 18-0-24, as twice amended this evening, is passed. This now brings us to item HS1. Councilmember Reed, do you have a motion relative to item HS1?
Yes, I move item HS1, the leaf blower item.
I second. Councilmember Reed moves passage of Resolution 21-R-24. Councilmember Haraqaris seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Haraqaris, followed by Kelly.
So I would like to urge my colleagues to vote yes on this. I don't know how you all spent the weekend, but I went back and watched old council meetings and public comment from two years ago when this passed. There was a complete lack of landscapers that showed up, other than someone from Canal Shores. And I think, you know, this debate, this problem is not straightforward, and it's complicated. And I think there's a lot of levels to it, and I just urge us to think about who we listen to at first crack and who we engage with. I really appreciate City Manager Stowe and staff for providing interpretation, you know, language access. You know, we, I'll be straight with everyone, we don't do a great job all the time. It's a lot of work, and there's a reason why we have problems engaging with Latino community. And so, you know, and it's not for lack of trying. Like, we, you know, there was a lot of outreach work done by, you know, the Health and Human Services crew, but, you know, until we started being punitive, I think that the message did not get out there. You know, one of the things, like, we take climate action really seriously, but we need to meet people where they are and have meaningful discussions about what the impact is. I had a really great meeting on Friday with the Greenways crew and talked to them about what the real-life implications are going electric, are on their, their workday, and, you know, they, you know, said it's basically 20 to 30% more work or more time, which, you know, we're not trying to make money on our Greenways work, but if you can imagine, you know, a small business owner having to do, roll that into their costs and still make a living. So, you know, also talked a lot with, you know, some of the folks from our green community, and, you know, they, you know, acknowledge that it's tough, and we're trying to solve a problem. I don't want this to be a fight. This has to be a collaboration. I think, I'll just leave it at there.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Burns, followed by Nusma.
Could you, could somebody just give me some clarification regarding the city? And is the city still exempt from this for some portion of time or for some portions of property?
I can, I can speak to that. I think Director Cano can come in and talk about it some more, but we are still exempt in the, in the ordinance. I think the two exemptions were city staff and Canal Shores, and there's been some pretty impressive work done by the city to be all-electric, and I'll let Director Cano speak to that.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, members of the council, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Stowe, Edgar Cano, Public Works Agency Director. So yes, under the current ordinance, right now, we do have some exemptions. The only exemptions that staff has is for use of gas blowers in baseball fields as well as artificial turfs. And then we did ask and was provide an exemption for construction projects related to paving or resurfacing of streets. And then Canal Shores also does have an exemption, but that's outside of city.
Thank you. Why?
I'm sorry, you said why?
Correct.
For baseball fields, it's very difficult to dry the infield with electric blowers. We have attempted it. The blowers do not produce the cubic foot pressure that we need in order to move those puddles before we can apply dry out. As far as for the paving projects, since we are milling pretty much the entire road, we're asking for larger-scale projects. When we're milling the entire road in order to just make sure that we clear everything for the tech to adhere, we need to make sure we get all of the dust out. So it's either gas-powered handheld blowers or large air compressors with combustible engines.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Nusma, followed by Reed.
Director Cano, I'll keep my first set of questions to you, because I think it will be helpful. I had a good talk with you earlier. So could you also go into why we exempt, why, what the reasoning behind staff requesting the exemption on construction projects?
Yeah, just as I previously stated, when we come in and we repave a road, obviously, there's a lot of milling, there's a lot of dust that's involved with that, and you want to make sure that you clear the road off as much particles and dust that you can in order to make sure that the materials adhere to it. Therefore, the, again, the electric blowers would just take completely too long, just don't have the power to make sure that, that we get all of that, that dust out. So that doesn't only apply to us, that also does apply to IDOT when they're coming in to do any projects on the roads, as well as a lot of our contracts when it comes to asphalt paving or asphalt patching, excuse me, when it comes to crack sealing and pavement markings. We usually bid those through the MPI, the Municipal Partnership Initiative, where a few communities get together in order to get better pricing, and we all jointly go out to bid. Larger quantities produce better pricing. With that, at the beginning of the bidding process, they do ask communities for suggestions to include in the bid. We have provided some recommendations before that weren't accepted, but usually, whatever goes in the bid, all the communities have to agree on, since everybody's going to be participating within that contract, and it could be a hard sell to get those into those MPI contracts.
And the first bit of what you said is not, you kind of emphasized the nature of the work, but it's less about the nature of work, but you also talked about just the area. Like, if we're doing a construction project on a road, we're talking, we're usually talking about a, a pretty big area.
Correct.
That needs to be, yeah, go ahead.
Correct. So when our in-house crews are actually just doing a utility, say a five-by-five, five-by-six utility, we do use electric blowers. We use electric blowers whenever we can, even on paving projects. However, when it's a larger area of full block, you know, 40-foot from curb to curb, again, you just need a different equipment in order to be handled, to handle that capacity in cubic foot.
Yeah, so what, you know, the thought I had is that if, for any of the exemptions that, that the city has, I think that everybody in a similar situation should also be exempted. So we've kind of said, okay, we're exempted in this situation, but if anybody else, maybe that's one amendment we can make, if anybody else finds themselves in a similar situation, baseball field, whatever we've, we've kind of spelled out in, in terms of our exemptions, I don't, I don't think we should necessarily lift it for us unless we disagree with what we just heard. We should just say anybody's exempt, whether it's the city of Evanston or a private contractor. So that's one. Two, that's all for now, Director Cano. Thank you. Two, this one is tough. So I mentioned early, or the last time we discussed this, that to me, there's, there's two different things. There's, like, how much notice do we give? So when did we pass it? When did it go into effect? How much time do we allow for people to, to prepare themselves to this? It sounds like that was either 16 months, 18 months, or something like that, when compared to six months for a fair work week and some of the other changes we've made that have impacted small businesses. So I think we've, we're good there, but clearly, I think the issue is, is maybe on the other side of things that I look at, which is, what is, what was the quality of the outreach? And how much feedback did we get? And I think clearly here, we didn't, and I think it's because we didn't have a way to understand, we didn't have a, we weren't in direct communication with, with the landscaping community as we are today, and so there was kind of limited opportunity to, to do outreach at some point. And so the question is, is like, how do we reconcile that? That's what I'm kind of struggling with right now. Do we, you know, support, you know, the, what they're asked, the moratorium, March 18th through April 8th? You know, Councilmember Reed, I think, suggested at a previous meeting, you correct me if I'm wrong, but a deprioritization. I hesitate on that because I don't think it discourages some of the vigilante, not vigilante, is it vigilante, behavior that we've seen. And so, you know, so I was leaning there at first, coming in, like, saying, okay, we probably should just deprioritize, meaning, again, not, not issue tickets, not fine people, et cetera, during the period. But again, I don't, I don't know how it discourages people from going out and taking pictures and ticketing. So this is tough. What I, what I, what I do believe is, is this, and obviously, the market is changing, and there's some costs, you know, associated with all of this, but I, I think, I think the, the, the technology around battery-powered leaf blowers or equipment has improved to the amount where Evanston, we should be able to provide a subsidy or some financial support where Evanston-based landscapers should be able to pay for this new equipment. Now, there also should be a needs assessment to that. You know, you are operating a business, so hopefully, you can kick in a bit too, right? So the business saying, look, we can come up with this amount. We typically like to do, you know, 25%, but it could be more than that if needed. But I think as long as, you know, we do some type of needs assessment, let's give them the money they need, Evanston-based businesses. Again, which, based on our ordinances, we define Evanston-based businesses, I believe, are businesses that are here for a year. So if you're concerned about, you know, companies starting to all of a sudden locate to Evanston, you know, they have to be here for a year to be considered an Evanston-based businesses, but let's give them the money, right? Like, that they need to, to, to transition. And I've, I had some, a conversation with Kara about this in the back to understand, you know, how much funding is, is in the sustainability fund that we're providing $25,000 grants through. I think there should be enough to, to get most people there, but again, it really depends on how many Evanston-based businesses, how many crews are they running at one time, and how many blowers do they need per crew? And if they decide to, to, if they decide to create or install a mobile charging unit in the, in the work vehicle as opposed to the facility, which I think is, is probably a less costly way to go about it, if you just kind of focus on batteries and not spend $13,000 to equip your vehicle. So these are just, these are just, you know, some thoughts I have, but I think if we're prepared today to say, look, we're, whatever the, you know, subsidy that's needed, based on that needs assessment, if we're prepared to, to provide that funding to the Evanston-based landscapers, then I'm, I'm less concerned about, you know, what happens moving forward. But again, even with that, I'm still think that unless somebody else can say how we reconcile the fact that we didn't have the community organized in the same way we do today, you know, I, I think I may support this, but I'm, I'm unsure. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This issue goes back prior to my time on council, so more than three years ago. This was an issue that had already been in discussion with prior council members, and I kind of inherited it and jumped in. And so I want to acknowledge that this, this ordinance does have an impact on small businesses, and acknowledge the fact that the majority, or at least many of these small businesses, are Hispanic businesses. Like, I understand where you're coming from. And when I got involved in this almost three years ago, we very consciously tried to engage the, the small businesses that are active in this space. We did the best we could. We talked to a state-level advocate. I talked to mi amigo Lope Orozco, who I know has some connections to this industry. We really tried to reach out. Unfortunately, we were not, I think, as effective as we would have been had Councilmember Haraqaris been on the council at that time, given his connections to the Hispanic community. So Councilmember Haraqaris, I'm glad that you're a part of this conversation now, and I think we're going to come up with a more robust discussion because of your outreach. And also, I want to be mindful of the fact that if we're talking about our CARP plan, equity is one of the guiding principles built into that CARP plan. So we have, as a, as a council, or technically, the previous council, acknowledged that when we are talking about climate action, we have to be mindful of potential inequitable impacts. So I'm very sympathetic to the message we have heard from, you know, members of the Hispanic community in the landscaping business. I also want to acknowledge that the voice of the community has been kind of overwhelmingly in support of, of continuing the ban and not allowing gas-powered electric leaf blowers. And so that's the conundrum here. I also want to acknowledge, or at least point out, pushback on some of the, pun intended, overblown rhetoric coming from the anti-leaf blower community. Please chill out a little bit. The mayor said dude earlier, I'm going to say chill out. If you are turned off by electric leaf blowers, please take a deep breath, put in some earplugs, and, and don't vent your, your ire on the, on the laborers themselves. You know, they're just trying to earn a living. I mean, so that, leaf blowers are, gas-powered leaf blowers are not good. They're not good. But if we're talking about climate action and carbon emissions, they are a teeny drop in the bucket compared to building emissions, compared to vehicle emissions, and it's those two areas where I think we should be focusing our attention when it comes to climate action. So for everybody who is up in arms about gas-powered leaf blowers, I hope you are equally supportive of banning natural gas in new construction. I hope you're equally supportive of adopting state-of-the-art building codes and energy codes. I hope you support converting our fleet of city vehicles to electric. I hope you support reducing parking minimums and doing everything else that's really going to make a difference when it comes to our, our community's carbon footprint. So at this point, I don't want to support a moratorium, because that is, that is moving backwards. So I'm going to vote no on this proposal. So I'm going to vote no on this proposal because we do have viable alternatives with electric leaf blowers. They are cleaner, they are more healthy, they're quieter, not only for the neighbors, but for the users themselves. And I, I also want to acknowledge that any, everyone who spoke against gas powered leaf blowers tonight, I didn't hear anybody express any concern for the laborers themselves that are using those units, right? And, and that's an equity consideration as well. And so that's on my mind as well. Councilmember Burns acknowledged that we have been talking about this in this present form for sixteen to eighteen months. The conversation goes back more than four years. So in terms of time to make an adjustment, I believe there has been adequate amount of time. I also want to point out that we are not alone here. This is not some crazy idea where there goes Evanston, you know, shooting off in some crazy direction. As of January first of this year, it is illegal to buy a gas powered leaf blower in the state of California. And ones that are already existing in that state, you know, have been outlawed in some municipalities within that state. And, and similar laws have taken effect in municipalities in Colorado, in Massachusetts, New York, Vermont, we heard from New Jersey here as well. So this is not new. This is the direction the industry is heading. So I'm going to vote no on a moratorium, but I do really think we need to make some improvements in how this ordinance is enforced. Number one, the way we set it up really allowed for an unfair and inappropriate vigilante style of enforcement, we hundred percent need to fix that. We can't put the power of, we can't empower residents to essentially write a ticket. That needs to be a city responsibility. Residents can, of course, report a violation, but then it has to be on the city to respond and observe that violation and, and write the ticket. So I think moving forward, enforcement of this ordinance has been proposed to be part of our new community responder program or alternative response. I think that makes sense to me. And then acknowledging
I just urged you, you're way past time, so
I'm, I'm about to wrap up.
Great news.
Acknowledging the financial impact on the small businesses, I, I really want to offer more incentives and more carrots, and would like to explore an idea that Councilmember Hadekatas originally came up with about, it might be more effective for us than giving you money to buy a leaf blower at, at a retail price, that we buy a whole bunch at wholesale and somehow pass that savings along to the industry. And another idea that occurred to me this evening is maybe the city has some kind of battery bank or battery library where we're helping them that way. So more discussions to follow. I'm over time, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed followed by Wen.
Thank you. So I, I want to note a few things to encourage my colleagues to support this. I've, I've gone back and forth on this myself. I'm, I'm going to vote yes today for several reasons. One, this is, we're, we're talking about a three week. One, I have to say, this is necessarily a deprioritization of enforcement. You can't override an ordinance with a resolution. So necessarily, this is deprioritizing enforcement of the leaf blower ordinance for three weeks at the beginning of this season. So that's what we're talking about. Three weeks of deprioritizing enforcement to, to give us some time to not issue tickets to people, or to, very likely not issue tickets to people during that three week period, unless there's like really gross behavior, which will still give us the, the ability to, and, and so that's, that's one. Two, this creates, is a part of this resolution, it, if it passes, it will create a special order of business that will appear on a future council agenda, I believe it's our first meeting in June or July, one of the two, where the council will look at our policy on the city's use of these gas blowers and the exemption for golf courses. And then we can have those conversations that Councilmember Burns was looking toward, that I heard Councilmember Kelly raised concerns about. We, we can have those discussions. And then, most importantly, as Councilmember Newsmar highlighted, Councilmember, we, we were able to get to this point because of the presence of Councilmember Hadekatas. And representation matters. Diversity matters. This is the first time our first Latino council member in Evanston is coming to the city and specifically, and I don't want to say it's the first, he's done a lot of work for the Latino community, but this is the first time that, you know, there's a real, real controversial ask that our first Latino council member is, is requesting of his colleagues. And I think we have to, if we truly care about representation and not just in a token manner, we have to at least very seriously consider it. And when you consider it, like I said, we're just talking about three weeks, the ordinance will still be in place, and, you know, we'll actually potentially be in a better place when we look at the special order of business in, in a few months that could potentially reduce the, the city's use and, and golf courses uses of, of these gas blowers. I, I do want to say that I think it's, so I, I encourage folks to, to vote yes on this, to, to have that three week reprieve. You know, the, the world isn't going to fall apart, and, and we'll, we'll be in a much better place. I'll, I'll pause there and, and come back around. Thank you.
Councilmember Wen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't support the, the moratorium because I heard from so many residents in my community, first when we were working to, to create the ban. And then last year, I heard from so many people who enjoyed the quiet, and there was a significant difference. I think one of the problems that we have with this ordinance is that instead of finding the landscaper, I think, and I've always thought this, that we should be finding the homeowner. I mean, the people who are the employers here. And I think that would make a difference if we made sure that we find the homeowner or the condo association or whoever it is that is employing the landscapers, because then it will make people realize that they, that we have this ban in place and they're going to have to spend more on their landscaping. I've heard from several people that their landscapers have raised their prices and people have been fine with that because they recognize it's going to be taking more work. I don't want to see us go backwards. We have been, we talked about this for at least three or four years. We've had a ban in the summertime on gas powered leaf blowers for years. So this isn't coming, or arriving as a thunderclap. This, this has been something that we have been talking about for a long time. We have literature in Spanish and English that we would give to homeowners to pass out to their landscapers about the summertime ban. I appreciate all the hard work that Councilmember Harkatis has put into this, but given the sentiment in my ward, I, I can't vote for the moratorium.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you so much. I too have heard both sides of the argument in my emails from residents, from non-second war residents, and I struggle with this. I want to support my council members, I want to support the community, I want to support small business owners. I come back to, and it, this happened before we, I got on council. We had a ban on bags, and until somebody got caught, until a business got caught, they kept breaking the rules until somebody called and said, this organi, this company, this business is still using bags. So I believe in giving grace in Evanston. What I am finding is that we're always looking for some, for somebody doing something wrong instead of trying to find right things that people are doing, right? And, and that's a growing trend. Instead of being helpful, it's always, you're doing this wrong. We're trying to catch people doing wrong things. So we should be doing more to help people do right. The enforcement is a problem. We cannot have residents taking pictures, stopping people. That is inappropriate on every single level and potentially can be dangerous to both parties. So that's unacceptable. And until we figure that out, how do we appropriately enforce that? I think we talked about it with the community responders, which we're not ready to roll that out as well. I have problems, though I understand why the city and the golf course can't always use electric, but it still builds that unevenness in the community. And whatever exemptions we have, the golf course have, we have to share that. That, that would be inappropriate to say, we can, but you can't. It, it's just, it doesn't look good, it doesn't feel good, and it isn't the right thing to do. I do like the homeowners, though. I cut my grass. Cutting my grass is my therapy, and since being on council, I need to cut my grass every day because I need therapy doing this job right here. But how do homeowners know? Usually if you're having that done, you're not there, and it's still penalizing a community. So it isn't like we're, we're not still penalizing. So I really have lost some sleep over this. I really have, trying to figure out what is the, and I, I know you did, and, and I know it's affecting your health, not only the situation, but the, the gas blowers themselves, right? We haven't talked about the potential personal harm to people, which is important, right? So we know you want to do better, be better. We get that. We, we, we wholeheartedly get that. I don't have an answer. I have been yelled at for my decision last week when I, I didn't quite understand because I was at work, and I didn't hear, there were so many amendments and changes, and I had to call, recall that vote. And I've had people call me yelling. So I can only imagine what you've had to endure. I want us to work it out. I don't know, I'm not in favor of a moratorium forever, for, for much longer, and I don't know that the three weeks really makes a difference. I don't know, if you can't get a leaf blower today, can you get one in three weeks? Right? And that's what's on the table. It's only a three week. Right. But that's, but that's not what's on our paper. So I, I can't deal, we can amend it, but I'm not going to go that far. But what we have is a three week period in front of us to deal with. So, so that, I'm, I'm, no, I'm past my time, I'm sorry. So thank you. But that's where I am right now. Thank you.
At this point, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Hadekatas with two and a quarter minutes left.
So I really appreciate the discussion up here, and I think there's a lot of layers to it, right? I don't think this is an easy problem to fix, and this is one of the reasons why I think at least a moratorium and a pause for three weeks, it's going to take staff time to process grants. It's going to take more, like, we have to do more work. That's obvious, you know? Like, last summer, I tried to, reaching out through people I knew in the community, tried to get people in, through the grant program, and because of the way we set it up, no one qualified, and that was really disappointing for me. So it's going to take work, and it's not going to get fixed in three weeks. And I think one of the things when, and I'd said this before, meeting people where they're at, I think one of the things that's kind of hurt us in this changeover is the fact that there is this kind of animosity and friction when people are, you know, taking pictures and, and trying to force something on someone. Like, me personally, I don't like being told what to do. And I think if you, we have like a meaningful conversation and build some trust, we can help these businesses get along, but it's not going to happen in a week. You know, there's, there's a reason why the only companies that have been able to, to convert have fifty, sixty employees. They have capital. Like, it's going to be, like, for them to drop, you know, twenty, it hurts, it hurts them too, to spend the money to convert, and it's also easier for them to charge more money. I think, I touched upon this a little bit at Human Services, but, you know, I, I don't know how many people are up at eleven twenty right now, but like, if you're watching this, value people's work regardless of what they look like. So if you have someone come and, and say, this costs two hundred and fifty bucks, don't haggle with them, you know? That's part of the problem. That's also, you know, fueling this unease and, you know, of making this change because, you know, twenty percent more work is twenty percent less of a paycheck for these folks. So this is probably the most unpopular position I've taken so far up here, but I'm willing to do this, and I just urge my colleagues to help these folks along.
Again, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with four minutes and forty-five seconds left.
Thank you. So I think we're all acknowledging unintended consequences here of good intentions to do the right thing with banning gas powered leaf blower, blowers. I do want to concur with Councilmember Wen. Can someone speak to whether, what percentage, or do we, are we finding homeowners? I would agree that I think we should be leaning towards finding homeowners versus the businesses. And when we do that with, I know in the past, we had letters that went out about perhaps a certain percentage of increase for services to cover for those costs. And then I also have a question regarding, like, just best practices statewide, countywide, just what are best practices in terms of how to do this right, so that we aren't penalizing our small businesses the way this is happening? And I wonder if there is a way that we can recognize the issue at hand and maybe issue warnings this year with fines next year, with no grace period, but, you know, fine, again, warnings for this year. So I do want to acknowledge the hardship, and again, look at finding homeowners with recommendations for increased services. Also, I have another question, both with regard to best practices, if our staff has surveyed best practices, and then what is, in terms of our grants for this? What I was hearing in the Spanish that was spoken was that the grants just aren't that interesting, and I don't quite understand why. So why are these not so appealing to our small businesses?
Good day, members of the city council. Ike Ogudarca for the Health and Human Services Department. I will address the questions regarding enforcement and ticket. The way that the ordinance is structured is that if anyone violates the, the ordinance for the first time, there is a warning. The second time, there is a fine, up to the fifth time and subsequently, that ranges from a hundred dollars to, to a hundred and fifty dollars. And the way our administrative adjudication process works is in order, for a case to be vented, there has to be some evidence. And that is why we have approached the way in which we enforce by asking for evidence, submitted through our three one one, where we take it to the administrative adjudication for, for vetting. Over the past, we're going to have to, I'm looking at other methods that we can employ so that it is not confrontational regarding someone who is not complying with the ordinance. It is something that we will have to verify and vet through our hearing officer to see if that method that I would like to employ is lawful and acceptable. And just to be transparent, I am hoping to incorporate a testimony on an affidavit in our three one one system, if that's allowable, so that they don't necessarily have to submit a video or so that they don't necessarily have to submit a video or a picture for us to follow up on that matter. So I think that will alleviate some of the issues that we are having about harassment and confrontation. And I know that we've also talked about the community response, um, program that will be implemented hopefully in June. Uh, there are many avenues in which we can explore how we can collaborate on this front. Currently, we only have one staff member who's responsible for enforcing this ordinance. And that's just, that's just not enough, just based on the number of complaints that we receive.
Thank you. So, and with regard to the ticketing of, the ticketing of, um, property owners and homeowners, is that, does that happen?
So mainly we have ticketed, um, those who are using, uh, the gasoline leaf blower. Uh, we have followed up with, uh, a notice to the property owners regarding whenever someone is violating the, the ordinance. Um, but there are opportunities that we can explore here to make it all inclusive. Uh, that will include the operator of the leaf blower at the time and the property owner who hired the, the operator.
Okay. Um, I think that would be great. I think if we could refocus more on the property owners, I think that would be helpful. And then I also agree with Councilmember Newsma. If we can look at both buying power, uh, to be able to offer both reduced and subsidized, uh, um, subsidized leaf blowers, electric leaf blowers. I think that would be great if staff could look into that. I think if we could do that and consider for this three week, what we're looking at. I can support this again, my, the residents in my ward are also, um, you know, very much opposed to leaf blowers. And, but I, but I would recommend if we could meet somewhere in the middle and, and consider warnings for these three weeks, um, with no grace period in the upcoming season. And bulk buying, you know, buying in bulk and offering these at a subsidized low price as well as, and again, I didn't get my question answered about the grants. So I heard, I don't know if one of the small business owners would like to explain why. I, I didn't quite understand why the grants that we offer are not appealing.
Uh, just point of information. Um, so the original like leaf blower grant required landscapers to be registered and registered for two consecutive years. And everyone I talked to, they were either not registered or had their registration lapsed. And there's also, um, I think people don't understand the hesitancy to, for immigrant families, Latino families to like put themselves out there and register, right? Um, culturally, you know, try to keep a low profile. Uh, we don't know what everyone's, um, immigration status is, you know? It, many families have like a mixed immigration status families. So it might not be the, the business owner who, he might, um, be a citizen, but you don't know what their extended family's situation is. So that also lends to one of the reasons why no one's going to, no one's really knocking down the door to register their business. Um, and I think also culturally, we usually don't ask for help. So, um, that also lends to kind of the hesitancy to come forward for these type of things.
Do you have Juan, a proposal on a way to better administer, to be able to help out financially with this expense?
Well, one of the things we explored was having a buyback program. Um, and that's been, and that's, we, we've had discussions with staff over the winter. Um, but one of the, one of the problems was also like, we just don't have folks registered. And, you know, there's obviously a built, you know, we, we didn't really make a lot of friends with the way we rolled this out, you know? So we have a problematic enforcement that's just lent to more, um, I think, hesitancy to come forward. And this is how we got here.
So the buyback, is there a way to do a buyback program that doesn't, that where we don't have to rely on this registration that is, you know, somewhat, I guess intimidating or off putting? Is there another way that we can do this? A way that we can subsidize small businesses to help make the transition to electric leaf blowers?
When myself and Director Ogbo talked about it, one of the things that I advocated for was a relatively low bar to, um, just prove Evanston residency. I think the tough thing is we, you know, we, we have limited resources. So we can't just have everyone come and get in a expensive, um, electric leaf blower. But frankly, just buying one leaf blower isn't going to set up your landscaping business to succeed. Um, Director Cano, could you come and talk about, um, kind of like what, what additional work did the city greenway staff have to do to get set up and, and, and moving with, um, with the electric leaf blowers? And the other thing I'll, I'll add, um, the city of Evanston and Northwestern Greenways crews are the only ones in the area that are primarily electric. So everyone else, um, Willmet, Wineka, they're using, from my, from my experience, what I've been heard is they're using gas blowers.
Uh, good evening. Um, yes, we, the city had to spend, uh, thirty seven thousand dollars to convert our handheld tools over to electric. That did include also our weed whackers and our, and our pole saws. Uh, but in addition to that, we had to buy, and the number escapes me right now, but I think it's about thirty six batteries. Um, but in order to charge those batteries, we had to retrofit our, uh, ready rooms where we get ready for the day, where we store our equipment. Uh, so we had facilities come over and just put charging stations all through there. I, as far as outlets go, I mean, I think they put close to thirty or forty outlets, uh, just in the shop. So when, uh, we go home for the day, we can charge them there. We put inverters in all of our vehicles so that when we are out working, we're able to, to switch our battery pack. So one of the, the ones that we use right now is just the higher capacity battery packs. Talking to the crews, um, they're going through about three of those, uh, every seven hours. So, uh, while they're using one, they got one charging in, in the truck in the inverter. So it, it was a large investment, not just for the purchase of it, but also for the charging, the mobile charging in the vehicles and for the charging, um, at the shop.
And I sent, um,
And this is, this is like really great. I just want to, yeah, we have it, just for traffic traction. Well, this is all kind of happening under the umbrella of Councilmember Kelly's time.
Okay. Sorry. Um, but I sent an email, just a point of information, um, to everyone showing that the city's, um, infrastructure with the electric leaf blowers.
So Councilmember Kelly, the floor is still yours.
I think that pretty much answers most of my questions. I guess I still am not clear on effective ways to subsidize our small businesses so that they can stay in business and continue and use, uh, move away from gas powered. I, I, I'm not hearing a solution for that, but I think we really need to do more looking to best practices. I'm sure some other cities have found ways, so. But I do like the idea of buying in bulk. I think that's one way. And I agree with, um, Councilmember Hadda-Carres that it's a delicate situation in terms of registration. But I know even with the schools, when we would look for ways for students to attend college, um, there's usually ways to get around that. So I think if we think creatively, we can find a way.
Um, there's a bunch of people still signed up just for, uh, situational awareness. We're past eleven thirty. We have three more items on our agenda. They all present the possibility of being barn burners of the people who are signed up. Uh, two, two of them have, their time expired. Um, so just, you know, plan accordingly. Um, at this time, no one has signed up to speak for a first time. So we'll go to Councilmember Reed with a minute fifteen left.
All, all reserve.
Uh, so this time, the only folks who are signed up to speak have their time expired, beginning with the second crack, very, very briefly, if you could, Councilmember Burns.
Um, I'll try to rattle through this quick. So, you know, I, I think it's important to understand the significant, the importance of these days, from my understanding is that the, um, the, the most challenging seasons in a sense for, uh, time periods for, uh, uh, for battery operated leaf blowers are like spring cleanup and fall cleanup. Is that right? And so spring cleanup is right around the corner, right? So the question is, and so I would imagine that the, the problem is they want to try to maximize profits and revenue as much as they can so that they can continue their businesses. I'm sure they're also on tight margins, as it feels like every business is, especially these types of businesses. And so I, I think we just need to wrap our heads around that. It, it is likely that right now, these companies, Evanston based businesses do not have the equipment to comply, which means that they're not going to be able to maximize their revenues and profits in two weeks. Right? Which is why they're asking for three, three weeks so that they, they could at least, um, get through the spring cleanup. From what I understand, summer is a whole lot easier. You could probably get through the whole summer with, you know, even a few battery powered, uh, um, leaf blowers, but that's not the case for spring cleanup. Definitely is not the case from what I heard, which, which just makes sense for fall cleanup. So that's the situation we're in right now. And I would have loved, I, I, I think if we would have aggressively reached, identified Evanston residents, figured out what they needed really quickly and figured out like what the cost is and get them grants as soon as we, we, we could, we wouldn't be in this situation. But we don't currently have a process to do that, to Councilmember McKelley's point. The grant that I think makes the most sense in what we're working off of now, and I, I believe what some of the companies have applied for is a sustainability grant that's up to twenty five thousand. I think for some companies that might be, that might work. It, it, it depends again on how many teams they have at one time and how many blowers they need. Information we don't really have, especially for Evanston residents. So we just need a little bit more time to figure all of that out. But, um, and, and, and I think that's it. Let me just check real quick my notes. Um, that's it.
Thank you. The last speaker is also over time. So if you could be brief as possible, it's Councilmember Hadda-Carres. Um, well, we're, we're down one member. So if you want to speak while that person comes back or? All right. Seeing over the discussion, would the clerk please take the role on resolution twenty one dash R dash twenty four?
Councilmember Hadda-Carres?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferedin?
No.
Councilmember Revell?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With four voting in favor and five voting against, the motion fails and the resolution is not passed. Councilmember Reed, you have a motion relative to item HS two.
Yeah, I move item HS two, uh, minimum wage, your emphasis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves, uh, introduction of ordinance seventy seven dash O dash twenty three. Councilmember Hadda-Carres, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Um, so I, uh, this, we've been here many, many times. We've, uh, held this off and tabled it many times. Um, it's gone through a long process, so I'm not going to repeat stuff. I'm, I'm just going to respond to, uh, I have one motion. I'm going to respond to some of the concerns that legitimate concerns that were raised by my colleagues at the last meeting. Um, first, I want to be sure that everyone can hear me. I'm not breaking up.
What, what was the question, Councilmember?
I, I wanted to make sure that everyone can hear me and that I'm not breaking up.
Yeah, loud and clear.
Okay. Okay. Um, so, uh, you know, Councilmember Sufferedin, Kelly, I, I think rightfully, uh, had questions about unintended consequences, uh, and what, uh, impact this may have on, uh, on some of our businesses, particularly if it would cause, uh, lower employment or for folks to, um, cut back on hours. Um, and, uh, what the research shows is that when you raise the minimum wage, mm, you know, marginally above the, the wage floor, the answer is no, there aren't, um, you know, many consequences such as lower employment or cutting back hours or firing people. When you raise the wage significantly above, uh, the standard, then yes, you, you do see those things. Uh, what we are doing here is not, uh, a significant increase above what folks are already paying. Um, and so the, the research is clear that this kind of increase, when our businesses are saying, hey, we're, we're paying either, some of them are saying, hey, we're already paying above this or we're paying right around here. They're not concerned necessarily with the, the dollar amount. So this is a good place to be where we're not going to see negative impacts. Um, there are cities, I, I'm forgetting now whether it's Seattle or Portland, but that made a significant jump and you did see those negative impacts. Um, so, uh, I, I think those are good questions. And the answer is that unintended consequences with this kind of minimum wage increase are, are, are almost non-existent, nonexistent, negligible. I do have one amendment. Um, I met with, uh, the Chicago Office of Labor Standards, the OLS, to, um, to look at, um, you know, some of the best practices in their ordinance. And, and I really, I sent the motion along earlier and I sent it in proper format. Got the section and the ordinance and everything in there. Um, so hopefully credit for that. But it's, to me, it's really important and it was suggested by Chicago and every other unit of government does this to keep the two point five percent or CPI, uh, increase in. Um, I've even added in something that I, I, that I was tuned into by Chicago, which is in their ordinance. Um, they have a provision where that automatic increase is suspended if unemployment is above eight point five, uh, percent, um, in the year before the increase. And so, um, I would, uh, encourage us to, uh, adopt that. So I'll move the motion, uh, that I sent to folks earlier.
Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second.
I will, I, I, um, come on, come on guys. I've, I've had discussions with five of you and folks who were saying that they're going to vote for this. I'm, I'm moving the two point five percent automatic increase. Somebody give me a second.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Reed moves to amend ordinance seventy seven dash O dash twenty three as described in the email sent to ten forty seven PM to reintroduce the, uh, annual increase. Councilmember Burns, seconds. Uh, is there, Councilmember Reed, you, you saw the floor. Do you want to continue?
Yeah, and I'll just say that, you know, I hope that I can trust my colleagues because I've had conversations with five of you who said that you're going to vote for this. So just vote for it. We don't, it's getting late. We don't need a lot of discussion, um, on this particular point. Let's vote it up or down. I hope that the five people who said that they're going to vote for this are going to keep their word and that we can have trust with each other. Uh, so I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, we can pass this. This is best practice. Um, and, and this is what really gives teeth to this ordinance. Uh, even added an improvement to ensure that when unemployment is high, similar to the Chicago ordinance, that, uh, this automatic increase is suspended in order to help our business community.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Burns, followed by Harris.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have my light on, uh, to offer, uh, the counter, uh, amendment. Yeah, so I'll just speak to this one and, and say that we have discussed this in, uh, in previous meetings and taken this, uh, automatic increase out. So I'm not willing to support, uh, Councilmember Reed's amendment as proposed right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Harris.
Um, I, I think you went over this, Councilmember Reed, but if you can just, is this, if this is something that is common in similar ordinances, uh, such as what we're considering, uh, to this evening, correct?
Yes. The state, the county, Chicago, every community that, uh, understands the, the new way that folks are approaching minimum wage is that they're not playing political football with it. They're putting in these automatic increases with CPI. This is a standard. This is good policy. This is what folks are doing. It's best practice.
And so just to that point, I, I think, you know, obviously the political process is, is a difficult one. And so when we can remove certain aspects of a policy out of that process, certain aspects of a policy out of that process, that is a good thing. Um, i- if, if it's appropriate, and I think it is in this situation. At the end of the day, we're, we're talking about um uh kind of nominal uh increases um that are tied to um, you know, inflation and, and just account for a, a natural or um, natural, but increases in the marketplace over that year or whatever time it's looking at. It makes sense. Again, there's certain aspects of what we discuss up here that we should remove from the political process when it's appropriate. And this is clearly one of them because every other jurisdiction that has this, has this included. And so I don't understand why we would uh, you know, it's, it's interesting because it's like in some cases, we want to be leaders, and then in some cases, we're like, well, who else is doing it? We want to follow exactly what they're doing. Let's do that here, right? Like, we don't have to overthink this. Uh, there's some trusted jurisdictions that have included this for good reason. I'm sure they've had way, you know, combined, they've had way more debate than, than we've had over the issue, and it, it all resulted in, in this being uh added. So I think we should add it back. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Harris.
I was signaling you to take me off. We're playing with the lights over here, so.
Ah, okay. Um, at this time, no one is requesting to speak. So would the clerk please take the role on the amendment emailed by Councilmember Reed at 10:47 PM?
Councilmember Hadakakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Well, I, I, th- this is on me. Councilmember Kelly had her hand up, and there was technological error on my end. I apologize. Um, Councilmember Kelly.
No problem. I guess I'm just trying to, and Councilmember Reed, I know we did talk today. Can you just walk me through the, again, to be leaders, yes, but leaders, if it impacts, if it isolates Evanston in a way that can potentially have an unintended consequence of negatively impacting our businesses, that's what I want to know. Because obviously I'm looking, you know, having, the first word being uh downtown, I want to make sure that we aren't undercutting our businesses or our hospitals. I know one of the concerns was because our, some of our, like Endeavor Hospital transcends several communities. So if they have people filling in from coming, coming to Evanston to fill in, they then have to adjust wages. Can you just walk me through a little bit how this works relative to other communities, this amendment? Like, what would?
Uh, you must have just missed the conversation there, but this is the norm in every.
But I mean, does this mean it puts us exactly on par with everybody else? Or does it mean we might be? Because I understand you're saying this is the norm to raise its CPI. But what I'm trying to figure out is, does this then align us in same wage? It doesn't, correct?
Uh, for small businesses, we will be still beneath communities like Chicago.
Okay, so it's still, there's, I mean, what, I, I obviously what I would like to see is statewide or at least countywide um parity with regard to wages so that we don't have, you know, something I hadn't thought about before being councilmember, but I've learned all too well that, you know, when we hit, when we change our, when we change certain aspects of our um, like whether it's wages or other um that it impacts our businesses here, and some of them move or some of them don't come. So that's just what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand here with this amendment.
So what is the question?
So the question is, this doesn't necessarily, I know you're saying it aligns in practice as per the raise, but it doesn't necessarily put us in, on par. We could still be above other neighboring communities, correct, in terms of wage?
Are we going to be above Willmet? Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what, yeah. So yes, the answer is yes. Are we going to be above Stokie? Yeah, Stokie and Willmet opted out of the county's minimum wage uh when it, when it came around. So those aren't communities that I'm looking to follow. And, you know, and I will say, go ahead.
Strains in our own community here, our business community. So that's just why, why I need to know that information. Thank you.
Uh, at this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. So we go back to Councilmember Nusma with 4:40 left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, further to Councilmember Kelly's point, um, the motion that Councilmember Reed is making uh would ensure that Evanston's minimum wage is the highest in the state. Um, we take the first step uh without an increase. It puts us above Chicago, uh, above Cook County, uh, uh, above Illinois's minimum, above the federal minimum. We'd be the, the highest in the state. Um, I'm willing to take that step uh, but only one step. I don't want to continually ensure that we are going to be the highest. And to me, the question is striking the right balance between the Chicago market and the north suburban uh market. Um, we're kind of caught in between. And, you know, we are not unfamiliar uh with the conundrum that our, you know, geographic location uh brings to a lot of deliberations. Are we going to follow Chicago? Are we going to follow uh the suburbs? And so, you know, those are the tradeoffs we're trying to make here. And, you know, I can support uh a minimum wage ordinance without an automatic increase. And this is based on, you know, some of the very clear feedback I have received from businesses uh in the fourth ward and, and elsewhere. Yeah, so Councilmember Kelly, I, I think that speaks to your concern. Um, so, you know, I'm going to be uh voting against this amendment and, and hope that we can uh, we can pass this in a different form. Thank you.
Still no one is seeking to speak for the first time. So we go back to Councilmember Reed with 40 seconds left.
Yes, uh, thank you. I just want to uh, uh, point out that um Evanston obviously is not one of Chicago's neighborhoods, but if we were a Chicago neighborhood, we would be actually one of the largest employers of Chicago residents. Um, and again, we are, we're, we're not just competing to attract businesses. Our businesses need employees. They need people to want to work in Evanston. So if we're not attracting folks to come here and work, and they're staying in their, in their home city and working, our businesses are going to struggle because of that. We saw with the leaf blower ordinance, you know, some of the biggest objectors to it, the, the, you know, nature's perspective, for example, were up in arms saying, don't do this. This is going to, you know, have negative impacts on our businesses. And what are they saying now? Oh, thank, thank you for doing it. This is good. This has been a positive to our business. The research shows that this is a positive. I want to be clear that uh the minimum wage, we'd be in line for small businesses and below Chicago and below some other communities with small businesses. For large businesses, that's where we'd be the highest. Oh, I don't care if we raised it to 1,000 employees. I, I'm, I'm not looking to target um, you know, uh, uh, small businesses with the higher minimum wage. I'm looking to target, target and, you know, the, the larger corporations that can, can bear this. So if folks are concerned about that, then the fix is I'm happy to raise the floor from 100 to 500, or whatever the case may be, whatever makes you comfortable. But we need this 2.5% increase, or this ordinance is pointless. Um, it's just a, it's just, go ahead, go ahead.
So at this time, no one has asked to speak for a first time. So we go back to Councilmember Burns with 3:15 left.
Yeah, I, I agree with that last sentiment. I mean, even, you know, and Councilmember Reed may not support this, but even like reducing the increase um to get the minimum wage, the automatic increase in there, that's important. You know, we overlooked that, we overlooked that as a city. We don't think about, you know, how we need to allocate funds differently year to year always because, especially projecting out longer periods of time. We don't do that when it comes to like how we maintain facilities and, and um, and other examples. And so it's just, that gets left out. And so when we're dealing with people who rely obviously on their wage to meet their most basic needs, they don't, they likely don't have, everybody doesn't have a lot of disposable income. They're just trying, they're using this money to get by. And so if an employer cannot take into account on their own, which they likely, which they won't always, those kind of year to, year over year increases to make sure that their employees are, have what they need to, again, to um, um, to make their way, that's a problem. Again, I, I think this is something we should require. We know w- we're in one of the highest uh kind of inflationary periods right now. We understand how inflation can, can um change everyone's bottom line, and I think this is a way to address it. So again, similar to Councilmember Reed, I would be, you know, willing to make other changes to this in order to get that in there because I think it is incredibly important. And again, I, I think we're in a period of time that should stress the importance of this, right? More than any, more than some of the other aspects of this. Like, this should be the one that we're all getting behind, understanding how costs can, can, can rise year over year. Uh, that's all. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on the amendment that was emailed by Councilmember Reed at 10:47 PM?
Councilmember Hadakakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Wen? Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
No, and I withdraw my motion on this, on, on the minimum wage. I'm, I'm not going to do a performative BS minimum wage increase. That's not going to do a damn thing for folks. So I withdraw my motion on this.
Uh, with one voting in favor and eight voting against, the motion to amend ordinance 77 dash O dash 23 fails. The motion to uh introduce ordinance 77 dash O dash 23 is withdrawn. Uh, this moves us therefore to item FB1. Um, is there a motion relative to item FB1?
Um, I'll move item FB1.
Second. Second.
Uh, Councilmember Kelly moves passage of ordinance 28 dash O dash 24. Councilmember Sufferton, seconds. Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, so if, if this is something that, you know, has some enough support, um, I plan to make some amendments. I need some help to figure out exactly where to put it and um whether or not it all belongs in, in the uh, the ordinance. But um, so I, I don't even, I'm not even sure you can be considered an Evanston resident and not have an opinion on whether or not Northwestern in particular, but let's take it broader than that. Whether, whether or not, if you have an opinion on whether or not nonprofits, particularly nonprofits who, who have quite a bit of land are paying their fair share. Like, that is part of being an Evanston resident. I have never really ran into anybody growing up here that is not having an opinion on the issue on either sides. You'll hear people that say, you know, they're, they're, they're doing great. Hear all the things that Northwestern is doing. We've heard from the hospitals, of course. Uh, you'll hear people that say that, but then you also hear people that say, hey, look, I think they should pay more. We heard earlier, I think a public commenter to say that, that this is a, this would be approving a discussion, especially because it's voluntary. But all this is, is approving a discussion. If you believe that you're doing all these great things, great, let's just talk about it, right? And this, to me, is, is the appropriate venue to do that. I don't think, although the Good Neighbor Fund alone has gotten this, us this far, and I think we've, the city has accomplished a lot through the Good Neighbor conversations, it's, it, you know, it's, it's really a, a one-on-one conversation between, you know, uh, uh, the mayor, whoever the mayor is at that time, and, and um, and uh leadership at Northwestern. And so I, I think especially because we're trying to, we're not just thinking about Northwestern, we're thinking about other, how other uh tax exempt nonprofits may impact the city. It makes sense for that process to be more transparent, for people to know what's being discussed and um, and to be able to follow along with the discussion and provide input. And so um, you know, I've always been supportive of, of pilot agreements. Again, I, I think it is the most professional and um, kind of proven manner to, to come up with these, to have these discussions and to come up with different ways for uh cities to partner with uh tax exempt organizations. And um, um, but that being said, in order for it to be effective, we can't insult one another, right? Like, the, the, thinking that we're going to come in here and replay what I've seen, I've observed the last several months around the Northwestern Stadium uh proposal, that we're going to bully, harass, insult, uh, 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 you know, criticize and, and, and allege things without, with very little to no evidence sometimes. That's not the way to get institutions to voluntarily commit to doing anything, right? And so uh, and so with that in mind, I have, I'll have several amendments, assuming that this has some support. I would, I would support it with these amendments. One is, I don't think we need to um require that a member of the Equity and Apartment Committee and Finance and Budget Committee sit on the committee. I think if, we should, similar to what we do with, with some of the other uh positions, we can say we want someone with finance and, you know, finance background, you know, equity or DI background, et cetera. But we don't need to um require that uh, that members from, a, a member from one of those committees sits on the agenda. So I wouldn't, or sits on the committee. So I would need to see that removed to support this. Um, I don't think the chair should have much of a, of a formal role. Uh, I think a facilitator should. I think it is incredibly important for a neutral, I don't want to say arbiter, but facilitator um to direct the meetings and to help kind of manage them and, and uh to ensure that uh um things are, are moving along smoothly. So I believe I would want to see a facilitator put in place. Um, also want to make sure that uh um behavior and, and conduct is incredibly important. And I would also want this committee to come up with rules to govern how people behave in these meetings um uh before I would, would also support this. I would want to see that commitment today. And it clear, it'd be clear that, that members can be uh asked, excused from those meetings um if they don't adhere to it. And I say that again because if you, especially when you have no evidence, but even if you do, if you have concerns, file an ethics complaint, file something with the circuit court. There are ways to settle different disputes and grievances and, 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 and um, and to, to have the appropriate bodies kind of investigate different claims that you may have. But to use meetings to a, a, again, weigh these, in many cases, baseless, but certainly claims without any evidence, I think is, 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 is a unproductive, is unproductive, is a terrible use of time. And it's not anything that I would expect any of these organizations to sit through, nor would I want to sit through that. And so I would want to see rules set up that um govern behavior, conduct at the meetings, and it clear that folks can be asked to excuse if they violate them. Um, I have a few others too, but I'm not going to type all of this up if there's not enough support. So I want to see how the discussion um moves forward. But I would, I would support uh creating a pilot uh task force or committee under uh, on, under the right terms. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Harris, followed by Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I supported looking into a pilot uh at, at least at a conceptual level um back in 2021. It was something we talked about during the election. And I, I voted in favor of this when it came in front of the uh Finance and Budget Committee, I believe in January of 2022. Uh, so two years ago. Um, and a lot has changed since then uh because we do have a, a very uh, you know, robust financial commitment from the university, something that we can be justifiably proud of. Um, and I think that took a lot of the wind out of the pilot sails uh when that happened. Uh, as a fiduciary for the city of Evanston, I, I don't want to leave any stone unturned uh when it comes to, you know, finding sources of additional revenue that are not property taxes. Um, and I certainly think it would be a good idea to like quantitatively uh, you know, make an assessment as to the value of the property owned by our nonprofits and know, you know, how much that might be worth if they, if it were subject to property taxes. Um, but when all is said and done, you know, we may very well conclude, and I'm prepared to kind of jump to this conclusion, certainly with respect to the, the hospitals, that, you know, we will conclude that the value of our nonprofit uh partners' kind of current contributions to our community, financial and otherwise, uh are more than sufficient. Uh, and we don't need a committee to do this. Um, you know, that's an exercise that we could handle at a, at a staff level, at a, at a committee level, just to kind of put those numbers together. Uh, and to pick up on what Councilmember Burns was saying, if the goal is, you know, truly and honestly to develop a collaborative relationship and, and maybe, just maybe convince somebody to give us some money voluntarily. and, and maybe, just maybe convince somebody to give us some money voluntarily, yeah, the approach we are, you know, we would follow with this proposal in front of us tonight is not the right approach. Uh, we're asking for folks to give us money voluntarily. Uh, and if that's gonna happen, it's really imperative that we nurture a collaborative relationship and we approach this exercise in partnership, rather than forcing somebody to come to the table or making up a committee that says, hey, you gotta be here, and, and they may or may not show up because they're not, they're not compelled to. Um, if the goal of this exercise is to palm the podium and make some speeches and get some soundbites, uh, and, uh, you know, just do some political posturing, then great, this is the right approach. But, uh, to me, it's a question of, do we look for a way to make real progress, or do we just engage in some performative kind of political theatrics? I come down squarely in favor of real progress. Um, I have some ideas on how we could set up a committee with the university, uh, something that would be, I believe, uh, jointly acceptable to both the city and the university.
I'm sorry, point of, point of, sorry, sorry to interrupt. Point of order. Uh, folks are saying that the live stream stopped.
Uh, yeah, there's, I think there, the, um, there's some activity going on. I mean, happy Tuesday, first of all. Um, yeah. Uh, one, one, one second. In what is surely top five resident accidental metaphors in the history of the English language, we have to pause because our systems have run out of memory. Um, so we'll stand at ease while our systems try to remember themselves. And just to reiterate, happy Tuesday, y'all. There we go. Uh, the, uh, meeting resumes at 11, uh, 12:10 AM with the live stream, as I understand it, working. Is that correct, Luke? Okay, excellent news. Thanks, Anderson and team, for your, uh, help. I guess we've got another six hours of, uh, memory, so let's go. Um, we continue with Councilmember Nusma with a minute thirty-six seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think where I was going was, uh, I'll, thinking along similar lines as, uh, as Councilmember Burns, you wanted to put some kind of, uh, a, a committee together, um, but doing it in such a way that it, it might actually be productive. And I would like to, you know, propose a committee that goes beyond, well beyond, you know, just a financial, uh, arrangement or financial transaction, but really get deeply into the relationship between the university and the city, build on the collaboration that I hope we have, uh, uh, you know, are, are able to enjoy, you know, out of this kind of newfound collaborative relationship. Um, let's, let, keep the hospitals out of it. They're doing good work. They can justify their nonprofit status. Let's concentrate on Northwestern. I don't wanna go into more detail on my idea for, uh, a committee right now, but it's something that I've discussed with several council members. Run it by Northwestern. It sounds like it might have some traction, so happy to bring this back around, uh, sooner rather than later for some additional discussion. But I'm gonna vote against, uh, the item in front of us tonight.
Uh, Councilmember Harris, followed by Reed, followed by Kelly.
Good morning, everyone. I've lost track of time and I'm out of memory. Um, so I did vote for this to come for discussion, and during, um, since that time, I have actually been a little appalled by the pop, the process in which we have lacked to have. Um, I've always talked about, um, many times, we put the cart before the horse, and we most definitely did this this time. We didn't have discussions with our organizations to say, what does this look like? This is what we're interested in doing and doing this together. We, we didn't, we did this very siloed and didn't work with, um, our nonprofits. I keep hearing Northwestern, um, but Evanston has many, many, many nonprofits, and I know the hospital, um, got roped into it. If we're going to assess what it is, then let's assess what it is and not just have one target. I don't, I don't appreciate that. I don't like that. If we're looking at something, then we need to be comprehensive with that. Um, I think we should have had better discussions in the beginning instead of posturing up here to, um, I feel like we, and I don't wanna use the word bullied, but that's what it felt like, that we made a proclamation and told people they were gonna come to the table voluntarily. You're going to come to the table voluntarily. Don't, don't go together in the same sentence. So you can't say you're going to come. Please, it does, it just doesn't work. What I'd like for us to think about is, um, and I spoke to quite a, I've received calls all weekend, um, more co-sponsorships, where we look at, how do we serve the community better? How do we get the word out of, um, and I've said this before, the different things that these organizations do for the city, for its residents, um, do, do we and can we use more? Most definitely. And, and I will ask, we will ask for more, but I don't think, um, the way this went about was really the white, right way to do it. Um, the hospitals talked about COVID and how they serviced our community, and, um, we lost people. And hadn't it been for our hospitals and our community, that number could have been greater. Yeah. So, um, while I am open for discussion, I think we, and I actually also received calls from the districts, like, how do we get mixed up in this? And what are the unintended consequences of that? We didn't ask them, did they wanna be at the table? And I said that clearly. Did they ask us? Did we put people in the mix that didn't wanna be part of that? So I have problem with that all the time. Let's find out what's going on. Let's be honest and, um, transparent with what our intentions are, and then have conversation and dialogue, not just be this, you have to do this, because if it's voluntary, they didn't volunteer to do it, is my understanding. We volunteered, we voluntold them, and that works in organizations that you sign up for, being voluntold. So I don't think we did this the right way. I'd like for us to talk to our organizations, um, all of them, not just three, all of them. We have, I'm, I'm not even gonna name names, but everybody knows who they are. We gave a lot of money today to nonprofits. So let's have the real discussions, if that's what we're going to do. Um, and I'm open for discussion, but I'm, I'm not feeling the pilot and the nefarious way in which I think business is trying to be done. So I will, um, be voting no.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Kelly.
Yeah, um, I, I, I also have changed my mind on this. I'm, I'm not going to be supporting a pilot now. I think it is, um, similar to Councilmember Nusma, I do think we had good discussions with Northwestern. We moved forward. Uh, we're able to get, uh, considerable considerations from them. I think that, um, you know, I, I do think that a discussion and laying out on the table what everyone is already contributing to the city and what's maybe missing is certainly a worthwhile discussion. Um, I, I just, I, I think I'm also in the camp that this may not be the right time. Uh, so at this moment, I'm not gonna be supporting the pilot.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So I just, um, you know, originally, when I put this forward a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago, I then now had asked, I actually wanted this to come, come back much later in April. Um, and Mayor Bis, you wanted to go ahead and put it on now, um, because I didn't have the time that I wanted to have. Since then, since it did go on the agenda at the last council meeting, I did have a very, you know, great meeting, I really appreciate, with, um, Julia Mirsta and, and Presidents Eric Rhodes and President Gabriel Cummings. Um, since then, we had a very good meeting, and I, since then, in, as a result of that meeting, I did revamp and rewrite, um, after getting input from that meeting. I did, I just shared it with everybody. And then I also today had a meeting, I met on the phone with, um, one of the board members, Mr. Percy Berger, and I shared what you all have in your mailbox now, which is, you'll see, very different. And, um, Councilmember Nusa, this does address much of what you're talking about, and you'll see, it is quite different, but it still is nevertheless, it's around taxes and property. It's Taxes and Property Review Committee, because it does encompass much more. Um, I've had lengthy discussions with the Board of Review, uh, at the Assessor's Office, and there's so much that we need to look at in terms of tax exempt properties and the impact on our community. And I don't think it's really, you know, it's more important to have, start this, this discussion in a formal way. It's far more discussion than whether or not, than, you know, whether the hospitals participate, as far as I'm concerned. It's important that we sit down and we start to get a grip on the percent of our private taxes and property. That we don't know. Nobody really has that. Even, I've requested that per square footage. I have the number of pins, but all of this has an impact on affordability. And I think it's time that we sit down and, and please look at, I've, I've shared with everybody, and this is just up, I'm in DC now at the National Legal Cities, so it's been hard to do this, but thank you. Um, I am very grateful to the hospitals for their participation and to Mr. Percy Berger for reading this over and weighing in and making comments on this. So this is collaborative, and that's the best way to go forward in a collaborative way. That's the way this will be strongest, is to do this in collaboration. So I would like to move to hold this. You can all see this revised version. And again, this was just up until I, I met last week and again, um, worked on it, shared it, and so this is the, the latest amended version, which you'll see puts an emphasis on first sort of, um, cataloging all the benefits, all the remarkable benefits from our, from our nonprofits, and also the benefits from the city to our nonprofits, the services we provide. And then the second important thing is collecting that data. That data, that is really hard. It's not that obvious, um, to collect. Um, that comes between three entities. It's the Board of Review, it's the Assessor's Office, and the State's Office. And it's a lot of data to be able to collect and to analyze, but not just tax exempt property, but also all the properties that are tax, um, property tax incentivized. I think that's also an important component for us to realize what we're compensating for. This is, this is all, you know, material and information that I've learned through this process. This also impacts overall our taxes, and I don't think we have a clear understanding of the incentivized, the property tax incentivized, incentivations that are incentive, incentives, I'm sorry, citywide that also impact renters and homeowners. So I would like to move to hold this. Again, I'd like to ask, you know, I, I shared the latest amended version, um, with amendments that include not meeting monthly. I never thought that was a good idea, to, you know, meetings triannually, moving to, uh, biannually after the first two years. And you'll, you'll see if you read that. And I, I would absolutely love to incorporate, um, Councilmember Burns and, and Nusma's ideas into this as well. So I'd like to move to hold this, um, to have a chance to further collaborate with the hospitals. Again, I'm, I'm grateful to their, um, their input and collaboration on this.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves to hold this item. Councilmember Sufferton, seconds. Uh, the motion to hold.
I move to, uh.
Councilmember Reed moves to overturn the hold, is that right?
Yeah, I'm moving to overturn the hold.
Councilmember, uh, so, okay, so just to level set here. Councilmember Kelly moves to hold. Councilmember Sufferton, seconds. That's not debatable, but it is overturnable. Councilmember Reed moves to overturn the hold. Councilmember Harris, seconds. I believe that's also not debatable. Would the clerk please take the, oh, I can do this. Um, I'll take the role on the motion to overturn the hold. Councilmember Hatakakis, Councilmember Kelly?
No, sorry.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With five voting in favor and two voting against, the motion to overturn the hold receives the required two-thirds majority, and the hold is overturned. Um, seeing no further discussion, uh, I'm gonna take the role on this item. This is now Ordinance 77-0-23. Councilmember Hatakakis, Councilmember Kelly?
This is on, so I, um, I would like to amend it with what I just provided to everybody. This is an amended version.
Point of order, we're, we're in the middle of a roll call, are we not?
Sorry, but, I'm sorry, but we just finished, it's, what time at night? I, I'm...
I'm not sure what side of the argument that sits on.
This feels a lot less ability happening at this point. Like, I know there's retaliation going on, everything else. So right now, I would just like, I just submitted a, an amended ver-
Point of order, we're, we're, we're in the middle of a roll call. There's not a claim of a technical issue. The roll call should continue.
That there was no time. I didn't even have enough moments to put up my hand to ask for an amendment. We went from, we went from overriding-
I mean, Councilmember, if you wanna go through the exercise, I think it's pretty clear the amendment doesn't have the support. If you'll, if you'd like, if you prefer to see it voted down, um, we can do that. But I, it's, it's clear that this time there's not support, and so I'm not sure what's-
Well, I would like to move forward this amended version that's in your boxes. It's okay. You can vote it down, but I'd like to move it forward. I think it's a, um, a strong version that I think-
All right, so we are gonna, we're gonna cease the roll call. Councilmember Kelly moves to amend this item as described in this email that we just received. Is there a second to that motion?
There's a PDF of the amended version with the, with the hospital's amendments to it.
That motion fails for lack of a second. And so now, seeing no further discussion, I'm gonna call the role on Ordinance 77-0-23. Councilmember Hatakakis, Councilmember Kelly?
Um, aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Wen? Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
I'm sorry, I'd like to vote, um, I'd like to vote no.
Uh, Councilmember Kelly changes her vote to no. Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Um, no.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
With zero voting in favor, that's a new one, and seven voting against, uh, the motion fails, and Ordinance 77-0-23 is not passed. This brings us to item-
I'd like to move to reconsider, being on the prevailing side. I'm sorry, this is, I don't think-
Councilmember Kelly moves to reconsider. That's totally in order. Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second. Uh, we now move on to, oh, I'm so sorry, I just said the ordinance number wrong. I was reading the wrong spot. When I said 77, I meant 28-0-24. My, my apologies. Uh, so just wanted to correct the record. I was speaking about 28-0-24, which was the initial motion that was made. Um, this brings us now to item ED1. Is there a motion relative to item ED1?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will move item ED1, uh, which is SKA Motors Evanston LLC-
Second.
Doing business at City VW, requesting a sales tax sharing agreement.
Councilmember Nusma, uh, recommends approval, uh, moves approval of the sales tax sharing agreement with SKA Motors Evanston LLC. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion?
No.
Nope.
Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is not currently here. Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Uh, with six voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and the agreement is approved. Uh, we now move to call of the wards. Councilmember Hatakakis? Do you have anything to report? Councilmember Kelly?
I'll report.
Councilmember Harris?
Ward, second ward, second ward, ward meeting, um, March 28th. I've lost it. And I wanted to just tell everyone who stayed, especially the leaf blowing community, I appreciated them staying to be part of the whole conversation.
Councilmember Wen?
The next third ward meeting is Thursday, March 14th, at Lincoln School, uh, from 7:00 to 8:30. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the next, uh, ward meeting is going to be Tuesday, April 2nd. The topic will be public safety, so we'll have representatives from Evanston Police Department as well as our new outreach team. Uh, so I hope you can join me at Robert Crown at 7 o'clock. And then, uh, office hours in April are going to be Saturday, April 13th. I forget where, you can look it up. It'll be online.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revelle?
Um, April 2nd, I'm gonna be having an Engage Evanston 2020, 2045 meeting, and with details to follow.
Yeah. One more, in case anyone's still listening, there is going to be an Engage Evanston, uh, meeting on Sunday, March 24th, 4:00 PM at the library, with a specific focus on sustainability, climate action, environmental justice.
climate action, environmental justice.
Councilmember Reed?
Uh, joint Fifth and Eighth Ward meeting, uh, will take place on the 28th. Uh, we will, it'll be hybrid, uh, so folks can either come in person, we're back in the Eighth Ward at the Levy Senior Center, uh, and a hybrid option will be available for folks. The link is, is online. Then I will have two virtual open, uh, office, uh, uh, times this month, uh, and, and it should be on the city calendar already. I believe, uh, the first one is, uh, this Friday, the 15th, uh, and then the next one will be the 23rd, if I'm remembering correctly. But it's listed on the city's website. I encourage folks, uh, to, to join both of those meetings.
Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Oh, and one.
Sorry, Councilmember Reed, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry, one, one last thing. I, I, I also, I, I want to highlight, uh, been, you know, the, the, um, the League of Women Voters, uh, recently released their, um, inter, their, their report that where they interviewed all of the council members, um, and gave some suggestions for, uh, how the council can build, um, better working relationship with each other. I, I think we need to do that. I, I think we need to build more trust in each other. I think we need to, uh, actually take opportunities, uh, to, um, uh, to, to, to do whatever we can to build that trust. And so I would really suggest, uh, that, that our city manager and our mayor, um, work together, um, to, and, and whatever council members, to figure out a plan for us to begin to, uh, engage in activities that can help us in a meaningful way, not just a kumbaya circle, but in a meaningful way, um, build, uh, a stronger working relationship with each other so we can be, I think we've been an effective council, I think we can be even more effective, uh, and so I would encourage us to take up the league in that manner. In that regard, I should say.
Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, uh, 120 slash 2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation. Uh, these agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in five I L C S 120 slash 2A, section C 11.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma, this is the city council, move into executive session. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Councilmember Hatakakis? Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Uh, with six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and at 2:31 a.m., the council moves to an executive session to begin like super immediately in the council member library.